Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 meeting, the City Council Meeting of May 24, 2017. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Well, welcome to all of you. Do we have any students out there tonight from VC or CSEB? No, you've all graduated and fulfilled your commitments already. So, welcome to the rest of you. At this time, we are going to ask you to stand for the invocation to be offered by Pastor Jeff Chandler from First Presbyterian Church, and then after he's finished, if you would remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance that would be led by Arianna Noon, a third grade student from Loudon Elementary School.
Thank you. Join me in prayer. Lord God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the gift of life, for the beauty that surrounds us, and for friendships that sustain us. Thank you for the people of our city with all of their abilities, interests, and gifts, how together we try to make our community better. Thank you for the ability to be involved in meaningful work and to honor, the honor of bearing responsibilities. In Scripture, you instruct us citizens to obey the governing authorities since you ultimately have established them. You encourage us to do that so that they might promote peace amid conflict, that they might support order in the environment of chaos. In light of your direction, I pray for our mayor and the council and for the various levels of city officials, I ask that you would grant them wisdom to govern well amid the conflicting interests and issues on the agenda. Grant them a sense of the true needs of the people of Bakersfield. We pray that you would grant them humility to work together in harmony even when there might be honest disagreement. And, Lord, we pray that you give them a joy in their task of leading. We pray for today's agenda. We pray that you grant them assurance for what is right and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Bakersfield. It is in your most gracious and holy name I pray, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to you, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to its control.
Thank you. You may be seated. Pastor Jeff, thank you so much for the investment of your congregation in our downtown community. Truly, you're an anchor there for us and just an outstanding example of a faith community. So, thank you very much. Arianna, thank you very much. Beautiful smile. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, and in keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to receive or send electronic communication during the meeting. We ask you to be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentation portion of the meeting, but it's not allowed at other times during the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. We thank you for your cooperation, and, Madam Clerk, now would you please read the first item?
We have a presentation by David Womack, Senior Vice President and Area Manager for Kaiser Permanente Kern County, and Kristin Weber, Senior Community Benefit Specialist for Kaiser Permanente Kern County, of a check for $26,775 to Mayor Go for the purpose of funding recreation and park swimming lessons and other aquatic-related programs for qualified residents.
So, thank you very much, Mayor Go, council members, city leaders, and ladies and gentlemen. We're going to double that check amount you just mentioned and give you $53,000.
Wow.
For what we call Operation Splash, and this will be for over the next two years. And, working with the City Parks and Recreation Department, what this is about, this will provide swimming lessons for 650 youth, it'll provide swim passes for 150 youth and their families, and provide junior lifeguard training for 20 individuals. And it will also provide a program about water safety, and we'll throw in something called Rethink Your Drink, which encourages people to not drink sugary beverages and drink things that have less detrimental health effects for 2,000 folks over the next two years. So, we're proud to present this, and we love to work with partners throughout the community. At Kaiser Permanente, our mission is to improve the health of our members and the communities we serve, and we know we cannot do that alone. "It takes a village," someone once said. And we love it when we can partner with other quality organizations that are working on the health of our community. I know the council heard a presentation from Flood Ministries earlier. We partner with them. We provide medical social workers to help them minister to the homeless. And still, I'm impressed with how much more we can do in Bakersfield and Kern County. You know, I heard Karen Go speak not too long ago to some Kaiser Permanente executives, and she emphasized the point that, you know, we're always at the top of the list or the bottom of the list, whichever end is the bad one. And when it comes to health statistics, and in fact Kern County is ranked 52 amongst 57 counties that there is data for, for health factors. And, and that bothers me because that's, we're missing our mission to improve the health of the community there, right? So, just a little plea for the future and maybe a little bit of a teaser, we have started working with our partner hospital, Adventist Health Bakersfield. We are meeting with the county health department here very shortly, and come this fall, we are going to do something, we're not quite sure what, to start a community-wide conversation about what can we do about those health statistics? We all know them. They come out in the newspaper all the time, but what can we do about that? So, we're going to round up the healthcare community. We're going to try to engage government, business, education, the faith community, and really begin an earnest conversation on that. So, please be watching for that, and we'll request your support for that. But that's enough for that commercial of my pet project. Let me give you this, Mayor Go, and I, Alan, I don't, however you cash that through the ATM.
Your word always is thrive. Isn't that the Kaiser word? And we just so appreciate the way that you are helping our community to thrive, body, soul, and spirit. It's that comprehensiveness that I so value in Kaiser and that continuity of care, the quality of investment. And as I said to your senior executives, Kaiser is a good partner. You're such a good partner in the community. I see you everywhere, supporting so much, and this investment in the safety of our children, in having swimming lessons, and in the quality of their life, being able to get out there and swim and just enjoy those water sports. We so appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very, very much, and all the best to Kaiser. We look forward to that event in the fall and ongoing partnership with you.
Great. Thank you.
Next item, please.
A presentation of a proclamation to American Legion Bakersfield, Unit 26, President Tiffany Nichols, and Honorary Junior Auxiliary Secretary Alyssa Hurtado declaring May 2017 Poppy Month.
Well, welcome. These are the words of John McCray. "In Flanders Field, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row that mark our place, and in the sky the larks, still bravely singing, fly scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Field." You know, this is the weekend where we particularly remember those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, and we are so grateful for organizations such as the American Legion who make a difference in causing us to remember and recognizing those who have given so much, who have given their all. And it's my honor now, as the mayor, to issue this proclamation. Proclamation from the Office of the City of Bakersfield, the mayor has officially proclaimed May 2017 as Poppy Month in our city in recognition of the commitment of the American Legion Auxiliary to distributing memorial poppies in order to refresh the consciousness of the American people regarding the price of freedom. In recognition of the significance of the crimson poppy, symbolic of American blood spilled, defending freedom from the forces of tyranny on Flanders battlefields in World War I. Its brilliant hue, a sign of hope and peace and restoration for a world weary of war, and in recognition of our veterans as well as the families of veterans assisted by the proceeds generated by the contributions for poppies. And it's signed Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield. It's my honor to present this to you.
Thank you so much, David.
Oh, you do have a camera here. Come on out here.
Thank you so much, Karen, for helping us remember our veterans, especially during the month of May every single year. We appreciate this so much every year from the City of Bakersfield because the American Legion Auxiliary just wants everyone to remember that Memorial Day is a three-day weekend, and it is a time to get together with family and friends and do fun stuff and, and just enjoy our freedoms here in the United States. We just want you to remember why you are free to do that on this three-day weekend. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And would you like to say a few words, our honorary member? Go ahead.
I would just like to say that this is an important time of month that we will, the American Legion Auxiliary likes to celebrate the ultimate sacrifice that our veterans made for us on Flanders Field. And it's just really nice that we show our support by giving donations and giving out poppies so everyone knows what our veterans did for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I know we have some other people from the American Legion. Why don't you stand up, and let's give you all a round of applause. Thank you so much for your service. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentation of a proclamation to American Public Works Association Branch President Jeannie Hill declaring May 21 through the 27, 2017 National Public Works Week in Bakersfield.
Welcome. You know, this morning, I wasn't worried about crossing a bridge that was going to fall through. I didn't have that thought at all, and I didn't have the thought that the sewer wasn't going to flow, or that the traffic lights weren't going to be coordinated, or that so many other things, that our police would not have vehicles that are serviced. But this is all made possible because of people like Jeannie and others. So, Jeannie is the president of the Public Works Association, and this is all made possible because of that work that we don't see. It's all behind the scenes, but it makes everything work, doesn't it? So, it's my honor to issue this proclamation. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim May 21 through 27, 2017 as National Public Works Week in our city, and urge all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works to our citizens, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life dated at Bakersfield, California, the 24th day of May 2017, and it's signed Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield. It's my honor to present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, on behalf of the American Public Works Association, I want to thank Mayor Go and the council for recognizing the public works professionals and consultants in our community for the work that we do. We really, it really is an honor to provide these services to the city and the community, and, and we appreciate your recognition of the work that we do.
Thank you so much. I'm confident no bridges are going to fall through, but thank you very much, and this was my doing, so if I get in trouble, I hung the poppy up here. But thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you are going to be speaking, would you come forward so we can move things along? If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the city clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meetings. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when the item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
We have received three speaker cards this evening. Each speaker will be discussing a separate subject. Our first speaker is Kevin Bartle regarding DBDC update and P-Bid.
Welcome, Mr. Bartle. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, city council, city staff. Mr. Tandy, I'm sorry the Condor's missed the playoffs this year. It's not my fault. My name is Kevin Bartle. I'm Chair of the P-Bid Committee for the Downtown Bakersfield Development Corporation. Our efforts being organized by the DBDC. I just wanted to come in and give everybody an update. I have some handouts as well for everybody up there. As many people know, a P-Bid is a property-based improvement district. It's something that is a tool used by hundreds of cities throughout California and the United States. Basically, an opportunity for property owners to contribute, combine shared funding towards extra services within their district. It's very popular in downtowns. I'm sure many of you are familiar with this. Anyways, the DBDC is spearheading the effort to get this passed here in our city. There are very few cities of our size in America that don't have a P-Bid, you know, in the scope that we're looking at. So, I wanted to let you know about what's going on with us. It's been a long, long time in planning up until this point, about a year in the making. We have a letter survey and an invite going out to property owners and business owners within our proposed district area. Those are going out this week. They should be getting them by the end of the week or early next. We have four upcoming public, sorry, meetings, not quite public. They're more towards the, the property owners and the business owners. We certainly welcome the council to attend those and listen to the feedback that we're getting. There's two of them in early June, two of them in early July. Again, these are specifically for the property owners who will be contributing to the P-Bid, voting on its passage. We will have public meetings later on in the summer, and we'll keep everybody apprised on that. Interesting to note, a familiar name from the past coming back here to Bakersfield to help us with our outreach efforts, Donna Sylvester, otherwise known as Donna Coons when she was living here. Anyways, we're very, we're very happy and fortunate to have her contributions towards this end. So, I would implore anybody interested in learning more about a P-Bid to go to our website, bakersfielddbdc.com. There is more info on P-Bids, generally what they do, how they're formed, who runs them. It's run by the actual property owners themselves, not us, not me. So, anyways, just wanted to keep you up to date on that. And also, before I go, we've gotten a lot of help from the city in this project as a lot of it refers to, you know, looking at property boundaries and potential property values. So, I know Caleb Lasky is leaving here in a matter of days. He's done a lot of work for us on that, so I wanted to send a special thank you to him and best of luck to Caleb on his way out, or he's here somewhere. Anyways, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle. Next speaker, please.
Melanie Farmer, DBA update.
Please introduce yourself.
Hello. I'm Melanie Farmer. I am the president and CEO of the Downtown Business Association and Honorable Mayor Go, City Council, and city staff. I'm here to present to the council regarding our association. Last week, we held our Spring Third Thursday event. It was very successful and highly attended by 3,000 people. Families were able to enjoy the beautiful Mill Creek Linear Park and at the same time helped celebrate our sponsors and promote our downtown businesses. This past week, we worked with a local nonprofit organization in coordinating a classic car show that was downtown this last weekend as well. The event brought back memories of the old days of cruising Chester. As the mayor can attest, we had some good times down there with Shannon Grove as well. We cruised along Chester, and the next day was a full, long day event with vendors, vans, and classic cars. So, it was a great, great time downtown. The evening, this evening, I'm sorry, this evening, I'm presenting to the city council a list of the upcoming events for the Downtown Business Association with mixers, expos, planned activities for the rest of the year, along with restaurant guides, shopping guides, medical guides, business guides, that we hope be very informative to you. Next month, we are planning a combination membership meeting and mixer at the Padre Hotel, which we will have created, which we have created, excuse me, a survey of our members to make sure that we are in touch with our members and we know the best way to serve them, and that is also in the packets that I'm going to give you guys tonight, give everybody tonight, excuse me. We, we appreciate our partnership with the city and enjoy working together, building a strong heartbeat of our city. So, thank you for allowing me to come up and speak tonight, and I would like to ask you permission to hand these to the clerk.
Thank you so much, Ms. Farmer, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that your team has done downtown. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Noel Pinio regarding BPD budget and body cameras.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Noel Pinio. Honorable mayor and distinguished members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here to make a statement in regard to the budget as well as the policies and procedures outlined for perhaps all members of the Bakersfield Police Department went on parole to wear bodies cameras as part of the regular police attire. Now, I'm sure that I'm just out of the loop, but can anyone tell me where the body camera idea is in the cogs and wheels of city government? At 12 noon, May 15, 2017, at the City of Bakersfield Department Budget Workshop, City Chief of Police Martin spoke of his police department budget. It was item 3A5, and as far as I could tell, I was the only person there who didn't have to be there, okay? In any case, the chief was very well spoken, but he didn't speak of a citywide plan to implement body cameras on the Bakersfield Police Department officers went on parole. Again, I just must be out of the loop. At the regular city council meeting on February 15, 2017, members of the community came forth and spoke of a need for our officers to have this form of technology, and I thought they were very well spoken when they came forward, okay? My question is really simple. Was any observable action taken from what seemed like a reasonable request from many of us in the community? From a budgetary point of reference, the City of Bakersfield is an employment agency for police, firemen, and city workers, and I think that is a very good thing. And if, and that we need more money to actually hire more of them. But people who live here want the police to wear body cameras while on active paroles. It's just that simple. My thinking on body cameras is that it would be an opportunity for the community, as well as the world, to see our Bakersfield police officers using best practices, as well as prudent and legally defensible use of force. Body cameras will protect the city and our police officers from frivolous lawsuits. This is because I have confidence in our police force in behaving in a manner that is defensible when witnessed by the objective eye of the body camera. Again, I thank you for your commitment to the community and this opportunity to speak to you. I have copies of what I said right here. Whenever I say anything, I always put it in writing. I stand by every word I ever stand, say. Thank you for, again, for the opportunity. Can I approach?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under workshops.
I'm sorry, I missed a light. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, mayor. Sorry, I was, I was late to the game there. I know we had several presentations from community folks on this particular issue probably two or three months ago, and I could have sworn there was either referral from Councilmember Parlier or a referral from me. Was, was that the case?
Yes.
Okay. So, so the, did he leave? No, there you are. So, the item was referred to a committee for a discussion, so stay tuned for that. Yeah. We haven't had the discussion yet.
Madam Clerk, go ahead and read the item again, please.
Under workshops, we have a workshop discussing changes to fees pursuant to the cost recovery system. A staff memorandum has been received for this item, transmitting a corrected attachment number one.
Mr. Smith?
Welcome. Thank you, mayor. Members of the city council, Nelson Smith, Finance Director. Just wait a moment for the projector.
Just wait a moment for the projector. I'll be providing a brief workshop on the master fee schedule and cost recovery. Be giving a brief overview with some recent history regarding the master fee schedule, discussing the proposed changes, talking about additional revenue to be generated through this program, and the next steps to complete the process. The master fee schedule is the council authorized listing of fees and charges. Cost recovery is defined in the Bakersfield Municipal Code to recover the full cost of providing services. Some of the services and fees included in the master fee schedule are building permit fees, planning map review costs, public works inspection fees, park reservation fees, fire inspection fees, taxi driver permit fees, softball registration fees, and the list goes on and on. There are about 102 different service centers in the master fee schedule. In March 2016, the council approved a 2% cost of living increase or adjustment to most of the fees in the fee schedule. A couple of years prior to that, in May of 2014, a full review of the fees was completed, but increases were capped at 8% to minimize the impact to the local economy. The last time a full and complete cost recovery fee adjustment took place was in 2008. Since 2008, our base salary costs have increased over 19%. Calpurs employer rates have increased between 7% to 13% for the various plans. And medical benefit costs have increased by about 20%. So the result is that several of these fees need to show significant increase to recover the full cost of service as outlined in the municipal code. This is a copy of attachment one in your packet and attached to the memo that you received. This summarizes the significant changes in the master fee schedule, highlighting all of the items that have a 10% or higher increase from the current rate. The first column shows the description of the fee, followed by the current adopted fee. The next column is the proposed fee. Then the dollar increase, the percent increase, and then the anticipated occurrences or the estimated quantity for the next fiscal year. So for instance, the first item, general plan maintenance, there's a current fee of $105. Proposed to go to $142, which is a $57 increase or 35%. And we anticipate about 1,400 of those units taking place next year. Another item there, like if you get a little further to A7, the street encroachment permit, current fee is $215, going to $420, which is a $207 increase or 97%. And they project about 60 of those fees being collected next year. This is the second half of that same schedule that's in your packet. I'm not going to go through them all, but I wanted to give you the information so that you can orient yourself to what the changes are and these significant changes. And we have provided that for you on a separate schedule. Many of the fees are associated with the development activity, building permits, inspections, planning reviews, lot line adjustments. These revenues and expenses are tracked in a sub-fund of the general fund, which we call the Development Services Fund. The purpose and goal of this fund is to match the development service revenues with the cost of providing those services. Since 2008, the Development Services Fund has been running at a deficit. The cumulative deficit of building, planning, and public works for the past five years is about $1.2 million. The fees being proposed for increase this year are estimated to generate an additional $435,000, and that revenue has been programmed into the fiscal year 1718 proposed budget. Attachment two in your agenda packet provides a city-by-city comparison of many of the development services fees. It compares the proposed Bakersfield fee to the existing fees of other jurisdictions. The attachment shows that generally speaking, even with the proposed rate increases, Bakersfield will still have some of the lowest fees when matched against comparable cities. Here are a few examples. This is the tentative parcel map review. The bar in green is the current city fee. The gold bar is the proposed Bakersfield fee. And then you can see the other cities comparable for this same fee in their jurisdiction. Fremont, Fresno, Glendale, Kern County, Modesto, Ontario, Oxnard, Pasadena, Riverside, and so on. Here's the view of the improvement plan check costs. And these are calculated from various cities on a, it's a formula-based program for most of the cities. And so we've used an estimate of a $1 million project to project these numbers. The cities with zero tend to have lesser activity and actually charge time and materials. So they track each individual permit fee and charge whatever it costs for that. So there wasn't ability to show an average or a comparison number. But they're not zero. We just don't have an actual number for them. And the final track map check, again, you can see that even with our proposed increase, our fees are still the lowest in, you know, with these comparable cities. So next steps, in order to increase fees or add fees to the master fee schedule, a public hearing has to take place. That public hearing is scheduled for June 7 to accept public comment on this item. And the council will be asked to approve the fee increases by adoption of a resolution following the public hearing. The fee increases would become effective July 1, with the exception of development fees, which require a 60-day waiting period. So those fees would be effective August 7. And that concludes my presentation.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, mayor. I just have a quick clarifying question to make sure I understand it. On the revised tentative track map review fee change, I understand it correctly that regardless of the size of the track map, that's the fee, correct? It's not, it's not based on some type of assessment or?
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I'd make the motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AA for approval. A staff memorandum has been received regarding item 8K, transmitting a modified agreement.
By Mayor Smith?
Thank you. Does any council member have a conflict of interest on any of the items? I do have one. Item 8D, I will not be voting on because that item involves a client of mine. Does any council member wish to remove an item for a separate consideration? Seeing none, then I will make a motion to approve consent calendar items A through AA. I would like to change item Y. That was the Kaiser Permante check that was changed from $26,775 to $53,550.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearings.
Madam Clerk, can you read specifically the item, please?
Under hearings, we have appeal by Gustavo Varela of the April 11, 2017 decision of the Board of Zoning Adjustment to approve one conditional use permit to allow six-person rooming house to expire on October 12, 2017, and two zoning modification to allow two automobile parking spaces where a minimum four spaces is required for a rooming house in a R1, one-family dwelling zone district located at 6106 Martinique Court.
Ms. Kitchen, please.
Thank you, mayor. Madam Clerk, could you put up the presentation, please? Thank you. Okay, this item before you this evening is an appeal to a conditional use permit that was approved by the BZA for a rooming house located on Martinique Court in southwest Bakersfield. As you can see from this aerial photo, the parcel in question is a single-family home that's located in a single-family community. The entire area is developed with single-family homes and a park to the north, and it is zoned as such, as you can see here. The specifics of the request are the original request was a conditional use permit to allow for an eight-person rooming house to exist within an existing single-family home that's 1,800 square feet with four bedrooms, and the associated parking modification to allow two parking spaces where four would be required for this kind of use. The services provided at the facility would include lodging, food services, laundry services, room cleaning and linen cleaning, transportation to medical appointments, and medication and grooming assistance. The applicant has provided some of the operational policies that they would have at the facility, and those include zero tolerance policies for drugs and alcohol use, medication approval by facility staff, curfews, and other requirements prohibiting residents from having overnight guests. Now, before I go any further, it's necessary to clarify exactly what a rooming house is. For these types of facilities within single-family neighborhoods or non-commercial areas, there are several different regulations that apply. The ones that we're thinking about tonight are the local land use and zoning regulations, but there are also state licensing regulations to consider as well as county and other case law considerations. At the local level, we look at these in two ways. One is it could be called a residential facility if it is licensed by the state. And if it is licensed by the state and has six or fewer residents, that would be a permitted use that doesn't require any other approval by the city. If it is a non-licensed facility, it would be considered a rooming house. And that is when there's any situation where three or more guest rooms are being rented. And that's the situation that we have before you this evening. The other regulations that I mentioned are those state regulations related to licensing, a potential county certification program. The county of Kern currently has launched a certification program to allow for providers of these types of facilities to be on their list. And the county then uses this list and provides it to other service providers as a recommended user. But this county certification is not required. It's just an option. There's other case laws as well related to family units. Families do not require a conditional use permit. For example, college students living in a house together would not require a CUP. So to sum all of that up, a conditional use permit would not be required if the situation qualifies as a family or if the facility serves six or fewer and has a state license or no more than two bedrooms were being rented to a total of two individuals within the home. So none of those situations occurred here. Again, this original request was for eight people within a non-licensed facility. And what this map shows is where these kinds of facilities have been approved with a conditional use permit. The green are approved since 2004, and there have been 13 of those. There are also three that have been denied since that period of time and eight additional ones that are pending and will be going forward with a conditional use permit request in the near future. So back to the specifics of this case. This application or this facility did receive a citation and a complaint through code enforcement on February 10. And a code enforcement case was opened, and the applicant was advised that they needed to acquire a conditional use permit in order to continue operating. And so the application was submitted in February. And at that time, staff learned that this facility had been operating without the necessary permits for two years. So the project was scheduled for the Board of Zoning Adjustment in April. And initially on scheduling that, staff recommended that it be approved. However, when the hearing notices went out, we received nine written comments and a petition with 48 signatures in opposition to the request. So on the day of that hearing, staff changed its recommendation to denial because staff didn't feel that the required findings of harmony and consistency with the neighborhood could be met. And those findings must be met in order to approve a conditional use permit. So at the board hearing, the applicant did appear, and she brought several of her clients. And they submitted testimony and indicated that they had a need for this facility. And the Board of Zoning Adjustment discussed the state licensing option. And if this person received a license from the state, then they would be able to operate for six or fewer, but not the eight. And so the board decided to approve the conditional use permit to allow for six for a period of six months in order to allow for that applicant to get state licensing. After that approval and decision was made, we did receive an appeal from the neighborhood. Gustavo Varela was the appellant on behalf of the entire neighborhood. And with that appeal package, they provided an additional 17 written comments and another petition with 42 signatures in opposition. And some of the things that were described in those comments and opposition letters were issues with decreased property values in the area and the way, some issues that had occurred with the operation of the facility over the last two years. Specifically, there had been quite a number of parking violations with vehicles being parked in the driveway, on sidewalks, blocking the street and things of that nature, for trash accumulating at the facility, for an increase in police activity in the area. And we did talk to the police department and found that there had been 20 calls for service in the last two years at this facility. This map shows the number of residents in the area that are in opposition to the request. The site is the one that is highlighted in yellow there. And all of the red are those that have signed a petition in opposition, written a specific letter, or both. On Martinique Street, there are 22 homes on that street, and 18 of those have been, have signed something in opposition. And then when you look at the surrounding two streets, there's a total of 52 homes there, and 36 of those have indicated that they are in opposition. So that's well over 60% of the surrounding neighborhood in opposition to this request. So again, in approving a conditional use permit, our municipal code requires that two findings be made. And the first is that the proposed use is deemed to be essential or desirable to the public convenience and welfare. And the second one is that the proposed use is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan. In considering this request, we looked at the testimony provided by the neighboring residents, the number of calls for service, and the fact that this operation has been unpermitted for the last two years. And it's our conclusion that we cannot make those findings to approve this request. And therefore, our recommendation this evening is that your council denies the conditional use permit and also upholds the appeal, which would effectively undo the approval made by the BZA. And with that, I'm available if you have any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers. So it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation. Then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. We'll ask you to please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Quickly, enter your statement at that time. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council... council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So, please be concise and avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If so, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Can't you see a show of hands of how many want to speak in opposition? Okay, thank you. So, first one, go ahead and come up to the microphone, please.
Hello, I'd like to thank you for taking up the time to listen and hear what is taking place. So, again, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, and thank you, staff.
Would you please identify yourself?
My name is, I'm sorry, my name is Pinky, let me have to come. I am the operator, owner of the facility. And I want to, I want to take this time to kind of help you understand somewhat of my background. So, I basically have been certified with the county to be a certified provider. I've also taken the state certification with the state and have been approved to operate a residential facility for adults. I've also have 15 years' background with dealing with mental health. The reason I'm here today is to discuss the housing. I'm here to give the women an opportunity to live in a normal, and what I consider to be a normal neighborhood, and the opportunity to have a normal life. These individuals have had challenges in their lives. They have gone through many different things, and they have now found a home to where they can feel comfortable and normal. I have two individuals that register for Bakersfield College and now are students there. I have individuals that go to the Career Services Center and to other programs, so they're very much functional. There, I won't say and say there haven't been issues over the last two years, because they have. I've had a few residents that I have received from the county and other locations where the residents did not fit the home. Inside of my emissions agreement, you'll find that if at any point a client does not fit the needs of the house, or I cannot provide the needs of the clients in the home, then at that time, we reassess the client, and we try to find placement as soon as possible. And in each incident that has occurred, I have done just that. I want to let my neighbors know that I have absolutely no hard feelings regardless of the outcome of what is going to happen. I'm just basically here to represent the home and kind of give an idea to the neighbors of what we are and what has been going on, because there are some things that are not understood, and they're looking in and seeing and not quite understanding. And it's gotten to the point where neighbors are grouping together on daily basis, and I'm not invited in those meetings. I would appreciate if I was, and I could have put some lighting on certain situations. So, the last meeting, there were concerns of parking, there was concerns of overflow of trash, sidewalk being blocked, children not being able to walk through to go to school, and things of that sort. So, I listened to my neighbors. You say that you had a problem with the trash? I got additional trash cans. There has not been any trash overflow around that trash since then. You say parking. I completely cleared out the garage, got a storage, put everything in there. If I needed to have that additional parking, the garage is available. Also, there has not been any blockage for the walkway. Has been mention of safety. As far as safety goes, I have installed cameras completely around the facility so that I can monitor everything that goes on around the facility. I've also passed out and mailed out a Open Heart, Open House invitation to everyone so that they could gather information and understand exactly what goes on with these individuals so that they can understand. Going back to safety, one of the issues was the 911 calls. On the 911, give me one. On the 911 calls, at least half of them are for check the welfare, and what that means is, these individuals had personal issues within the home. And these individuals could have had extreme anxiety, could have been feeling depressed at the time, and needed someone to talk to. Generally, what happens is, they will get on their phones, they will call Crisis. Crisis then will say, okay. They listen to the client. At that point, they determine whether a police officer needs to come out. That police officer comes out, he assesss. If he feels that the med team needs to come, then the med team will come. So, the majority of these 911 calls isn't for the public. The public has not called. These are internal calls. There are some that were no findings. There are some that were even canceled. And then, there's other additional calls here also that were internal, not necessarily for those health issues, but just as any other household disputes among each other. And that's kind of where the 911s are. It's not necessarily any violence opposed to the neighbors. Like I said, a great concern is what I've been hearing regarding safety. And I just want my neighbors to know that I am willing to do whatever it takes to resolve whatever issues that are occurring or were, they feel like, has occurred. So, I have, like I said, I have did all the additional things that you've said. These things are your concerns. I said, okay, I hear you. I will do what you asked of me if you let me know. I've had individuals email me in negative ways. And what I mean by that, I've had an email asking for names, for medical history, for physical history of each and every person in the house. Unfortunately, I cannot do things like that. It violates every hip of violation there is. I've had my neighbors go to my personal residence and ask questions among individuals around my neighborhood. I actually ran into this individual. I talked with this individual. This individual said, well, this house at one point was listed, so since it was listed, I thought I'd come. It began to become more, instead of protecting the neighborhood, more of a harassment or a personal thing. And I'm concerned with all individuals. The women of the house, the neighborhood, and even when you speak of the children, with the children. The children actually walk through the neighborhood without supervision. So, if there is danger, I would think that they would be supervised from their individuals. It has been almost two years. There has never been an incident where there has been an actual report that was claimed against one of the clients in the home. And what I mean by that is, there was never any charges. Even with the police report itself, there is no criminal relating things to this. There has been no findings, except for, like I said, with the check the welfare. And so, I guess what I want to say to my neighbors is, I am willing, as your neighbor, to do the necessary things that it takes to make this operation work. And it's not solely just because of money, so I want you to understand that I don't make much of anything doing this. My heart is in this. I feel I have a calling for these individuals, and this is something that I love doing. So, I just want to let you know that I do appreciate you, I do hear your concerns, and I am willing to accommodate. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have about six minutes for the next three or four speakers in total, so if you come forward quickly, please, and make your comments. Please identify yourself when you come to the mic.
Hello, my name is Gabriela, and I live next to Pinky. I just wanted to say that I had never had any problems with her. Everything that she's saying, that the neighbors had problems with, her trash and her vehicles and all that, she took care of everything. And she listens to people when they have a problem. I never personally had any problems with her. And I personally think that she's doing a really great job by helping these women. And for, you know, for what I see, she really helps these people, and I'm really happy with what she's doing, and I'm with her. That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Juan Saca. I run a licensed facility, and Ms. Pinky has worked for me for many years as an administrator, and I can attest to her knowledge and experience. And also, I hear about the neighbors' complaints, and I'm glad the neighbors are here. So, my only question is, because the mentally ill population is growing by leaps and bounds, we have the diagnosed and non-diagnosed mentally ill. My question is, who indeed are my neighbors? Is my neighbor the one that I'm kicking out of the neighborhood, or is the one I'm trying to care for and be compassionate about? Because the mentally ill population don't need our sympathy. They need our compassion. Sympathy is just feeling sorry about somebody. Compassion is acting on it. And I know Ms. Pinky, and she has compassion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Nicole, and I'm a resident at the Room and Board. And I wanted to say that this place saved my life. Before I was living there, I was homeless, almost on the street because of family issues. And Ms. Pinky has took me in, treated me like her daughter. And, you know, I don't even walk on the sidewalk. I have to walk in the middle of the street because I'm afraid of judgment from the neighbors, because they said that we were on their property. So, I don't even feel safe being, going outside, because I'm scared they're going to call the police or have accusation just because I'm walking down the street. Because basically, what they're doing is, they're making all these judgments and all these things without actually knowing us. None of them, I have never had any single of these people ask me how I'm doing, or how's your day, when I walk by. All I see is rolling of eyes and hurriedly getting in their house. To me, I feel like they're being ignorant on mental illness. We are not a danger to people. We have feelings too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. How many more want to speak in opposition? Just one more. We have about three minutes left for all of you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Culver. Good evening. My name is Sarah Culver. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I have been a tenant here at 6106 Martinique Court, Bakersfield, California, 93313, for nearly two years, and have been extremely happy with where I reside and the neighborhood I live in. Like all neighborhoods, from time to time, there could be friction, which I have seen very little of since I have lived here. I, myself, have struggled with a mental health diagnosis for many years, for the first time in over 15 years. I found a place where I feel comfortable, safe, and respected in the neighborhood I live in. I have been more stable here than any other place in my journey of dealing with my diagnosis than where I am here. It seems strange to me that all this time has gone by with no problems, and then all of a sudden, an interest in our home. I hope that the court system will evaluate the entire situation before deciding to displace six girls currently, and who knows how many girls in the future who benefit by this placement. Thank you for your time, Sarah Culver.
Thank you. And our final speaker, please. Please identify yourself. You have about a minute.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Herrera. I'm a client at Open Heart Room and Board, and I was struggling with mental issues and physical issues. I have epilepsy, and I have no family. They currently just are all against me, and it hurts, because Pinky has saved my life. I have changed so much with my mental health issues and with physical issues that I've been going through. This room and board is like a family, and that's all I have left. I was homeless before I came to the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? We have about a minute. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in favor of staff's recommendation? How many, would you raise your hands if you would like to speak? And could you come to the front row, too, so we can just save some time, please? Welcome. Please introduce yourself. We have 15 minutes for all of this next group.
Okay. Hello, my name is Dolores Martinez, and I reside at 6107 Martinique Court. I would like to have this opening statement of saying thank you, Honorable Go and the council members. I am the speaker of the community. There are several speakers, but we have one right now, because we do have quite a bit to share. I would like to begin with, I have an outline here of what I want to say, and I'm going to say this here, I know I'm short on time, but I do want to say that there is no hard feelings. We have a very good neighborhood. I didn't get to know any of them until all of this occurred. Everyone has lives, and we're all busy, and we are all compassionate, so I met quite a few of them. So, we do understand, we do have compassion. I do go out and help the community with our church. I have donated. So, all of that we do have, so we do understand. But I want to, I just felt like I needed to share that as well. The concerns that we have, a good neighbor policy. I know, I believe Pinky said that she had sent out some to meet and have an open house for the Open Heart, the good neighbor policy, and I never got anything, so unless I just missed it. But she had stated in the previous hearing that she distributed the good neighbor policy. Approximately two years ago, when she started this business, I didn't know what it was, nor did our neighbors, until it all came to surface of what was happening here. There was no good neighbor policy. Many of us knew something was going on, we just didn't know what it was. I thought, and I believe some of my other neighbors thought too, I didn't know if there was any drug dealing going on or what. The cops were coming. There was, I didn't want to get involved, because that's a scary thing to get involved. You see the police coming and going, different vehicles driving by and stopping, different people coming and going, so I didn't know what was happening. Now, I know what's going on with the police there. It's been, you know, it's a high risk there. All the police going by there, it's just a danger. All the police going by there, it's just a danger in the area. And my grandson, you know, none of those police are back. So, I mean, it's just not comfortable. We've had five police cars surrounded the house in question on April 30th around 9:30 PM. I don't know what happened there. Whether there are findings or not, they're still there, so something is happening. This creates fear and uncertainty in the community, whether we're walking, bike riding, walking the dogs, or always having to look around. I live directly across the street from Pinky, so if our front door is open, there's a straight clear shot through our living room and into our kitchen. So we always make sure that the door is not open all the way and that's not a way to live because we've had episodes where her clients have just walked into a home if it's not locked. The residents' public safety. Several statements, proof by pictures, have indicated residents are lying down on the streets and the sidewalk. It's not only harmful to the community, but it's harmful to them, you know, themselves. Pinky states that they come and go, I'm sorry, I'm gonna refer to her as Pinky and that's not a disrespectful thing, I'm just having a hard time saying your last name, so I apologize for that. States that they come and go as they please, as she stated in the previous hearing, which creates trepidation within the community because the residents of the mental illness Which Pinky herself states that she once had a schizophrenic in her home. She also stated that there's screening process that they go through, so I don't know how, she did talk to me about that and we were outside and she said she didn't know how that one got through, but it did and that they were gonna be gone in a week or so, I can't remember how many days. But anyway, it did get through, so it does happen. It just takes one episode, one time. And so if somebody gets through the screening process that she has where it's not safe, one time is too many. We can't step out the door without looking. The first thing I do when I look out is I look straight out there. And while I'm talking about that, I'm gonna kind of go outside my little guideline here, there aren't any ever, there aren't any eyeballs rolling. I don't know where that's coming from, but we're all really nice people and I still want us to, no matter the outcome, we still all want to get along. We live there. I've lived there for 23 years, I've raised four children, and now I've got, you know, my grandkids come over and one that lives there. So, anyway. And as I sat here today, I had a few eyeballs rolling too, so it's, I don't, it needs to be peaceful, whatever the outcome is, but we just need to get our point to you to tell you, this is how we're living on a daily basis. My daughter goes to work at 5:00 in the morning, it's still dark, and she's fearful, so, and my husband, fearish for her too. We all have different work hours, we all leave the house different times. Not knowing what type of patients there are, low-risk patients, she states. Well, what's low-risk? You know, how do you define that? 24/7 day supervision. Pinky states she locks the doors at 10:00 and doesn't open them until 6:00. No one gets in or out. Several occurrences where residents have come out early in the morning before sunrise. If mentally ill patients are allowed to come and go as they please, then they're not supervised If Pinky is in charge of the late shift, having these residents out before sunlight without her knowledge, it shows that Pinky is negligent and careless of her business and profession. I do have some handouts here that I would like to give you to expand the view. I think you already have copies, but this might open it up a little bit. I can give this to you at the end or if I may now.
Go ahead and give them to the city clerk. And are you finished with your comments? We have about seven minutes left for seven speakers.
Let me, I feel pressure, I feel the pressure on. Okay. Property. Because no one knew of this business, people who purchased their homes were stuck with a false sense of neighborhood safety, security, and value. We didn't have that when we moved in, we were okay, but a lot of my neighbors moved in to raise their family and now they have the same fear that we all have, or they wouldn't have purchased their home. But I would like to talk about, you know, she went for two years with running this business without a state license. I'm sorry, but that shows a dishonesty, carelessness, and a disregard for the law. So that right there speaks for itself. It's detrimental to the community's safety, wellness, and overall experience. I do have more to say, but I need to let my neighbors speak as well, so I'm gonna...
We have six minutes left for seven speakers, so you might want to just pace yourself on that. Thank you.
My name is Gustavo Varela. I reside at 6111 Martini Court. I feel for the patients that are here. They need care, definitely. But my biggest concern is as follows. Pinky's duties as a business owner is to serve her customers, who are her residents, and to fulfill her obligations to the neighborhood around her, as stated in the good neighborhood policy. Pinky's trust and credibility have been extinguished throughout the neighborhood through multiple negative experiences by the neighborhood with the residents of the Open Heart. To run a business is to adhere to the rules. Regardless of what Pinky says, two years without a state license and a business license shows lack of responsibility and it discredits her credibility with the neighborhood. With this track record, how can I really trust her? Also, this is a consistent basis of what's happening. I have a statement here from Mr. Ochoa, when she ran her second business, they had the same problems. This is a statement that I'd like to give city clerk and I have for each and one of It states basically that they have had problems with her second facility, as well as it indicates that they never received a good neighbor policy, as same as we never received a good neighbor policy. I also have some other documentation here in regards to the room and board where it states facilities are not, that this facility is not licensed or monitored by any government agency. And also, at the time when she had her business in the second neighborhood. I know this time is limited for me, so I'm gonna let my other neighbors speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. Varela. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Salinas. I live directly next door to this residence. I purchased the house in 2013. We also never received any notification in the last couple of years about the good neighbor policy until the most recent one. We've also witnessed multiple loud confrontations in the front yard, a few of them requiring police intervention. There are no fences that separate our front yard, so these arguments have occurred mere feet from our front windows. So I don't know if a weapon will be pulled out in any of these heat of the moment type situations, so it makes me feel uncomfortable. And in regards to why no one approached her, because of situations like these, we didn't feel safe going up to that residence to see what these issues were about. We've also had issues with people parking and blocking our driveway and then entering the residence next door, so they've blocked us from actually going into our driveway. When she delivered the most recent good neighbor handout, she told us that she would be housing homeless women but never once mentioned that they suffered from mental illness. As a registered nurse, I have a good understanding of mental illness and I agree it is important for these women to receive help and support, but I do not see our neighborhood as the appropriate location. At the last hearing, Pinky mentioned that she did not house women with major illnesses, but depression, schizophrenia, and bipolar disorders all have the potential of becoming major. Although these illnesses can be managed under the right circumstances, they can also be unpredictable. So since they can come and go during daytime hours, it doesn't provide a sense of security even if there is an employee at the house because the clients don't have to be there themselves. So when purchasing the home, the neighborhood was often a key component on purchasing or not, and I know a lot of us probably would not have purchased if this business had been in operation. So although I truly hope these women receive the help they need, it is also unfair to ignore the interests of the homeowners who worked hard to be able to purchase a home and did so with the expectation of a business-free, safe, and friendly environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Next speaker, please. We have two minutes left.
Okay, I'll try to make it quick. My name is Deana Rubano. I live at 6209 Martini Court.
Can you pull the mic down, please?
Oh yeah, sure. Better. I'd like to touch base on a few things that we had here that weren't mentioned. Obviously, we don't understand the full staff-to-patient ratio. To me, if you're dealing with mentally ill patients, one to six or one to eight if that, for instance, and she is only showing that one staff member is there in an intervention every four hours, from my understanding. If something was to happen during that period, you know, from my understanding, patients can be erratic or things of that sort and one person to be there can actually, I guess you could say, be outnumbered. Also, there has been requests in reference to drug testing since Pinky stated that there is random drug testing. We've never really heard back from her in reference to that. From my understanding, if there's sign-in sheets, every patient is supposed to find in and out when they are leaving the facilities. Also, I'd like to personally touch base on the fact that when Pinky originally went in for her certification for the facilities, she's given certification guidelines. These guidelines state that even just for a room and board, she is to provide a copy of a current business license, fire inspection certificate, conditional use permit upon request by the department at any time, and these are all things in which she did not have operating two years ago. Pinky did have another facility as of 4/10 of this year that I downloaded to my cellphone showing that she was operating a facility in the 9 through 311 zip code. I recently did go there because I, as I told Pinky, don't have the opportunity and don't live as close as some of my neighbors, so I wanted to see and find out things for myself. It was relatively a quiet neighborhood, but I did take the time to talk to a couple of the neighbors and they did have many, many concerns, in which I did speak with Pinky about. She asked me what the concerns were. I told her she needs to talk to her neighbors, which she should have done two years ago. Also, on the mental health website showing the housing, Pinky stated here at our last meeting that the house was going to only be a female residence. In the paperwork that you have provided, it now states that it's going to be male and female. So as far as her word goes, it really doesn't have any good standing.
Thank you.
That's it.
We've run out of time for this portion, but now we can have rebuttal statements. At this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut the opposition?
I just would like to collaborate on some things. As far as running a second facility, I've never had a second facility. The location that they're referring to is my home, my actual physical home. What they are looking at is a certification from the county where I requested to have that home. At one point, I was going to, I decided not to. So that's that. Also, as far as not having license, the reason why, I actually went to apply for a business license. I have a business license, I have applied for the state, the state has accepted my application. I do have a fire clearance. I have every legal thing that is required of me except for the conditional use permit. At this point, I am waiting for the state to finalize so that I can run as a licensed state facility. So at this point, I'm just waiting on them and I'm just asking that you give me time so that these individuals can still have their home. And also, as far as drug screening, we don't do drug screenings unless we notice that there is an issue. There is a sign-in, sign-out sheet. The individuals are able to leave and go and come as they please, they are human beings. These individuals have just as much right to live in their home as anyone else. And as you can see, it has grown rapidly. As you notice on the screen, there are so many homes like this that are being formed. At this point, regardless of the outcome, there will still be, I am legal to have at least two individuals live there. So even with that, you're still gonna be among the individuals. And they're not patients, they are people, just like anybody else, and they deserve a chance. As I stated before, you have two individuals that are going to school. Before, these individuals were always in crisis and dealing with situations. They now feel home and stable, they have an opportunity. And now, with the neighbors, I understand your concerns, I've addressed your concerns. I have said I will do whatever, you know, needs to be done to accommodate you so that you can feel safe. You know, as far as safety goes, there hasn't been any violent acts, there hasn't been anything personally done to anybody. This is more or less, I think, a fear of not completely knowing. I have sent out invitations for an open house so that you can understand, so I can give you information, so that I can have county workers there to help me, help you understand. There's also the website that you can go on. I am trying to create a resolution so that we all can get along, so that we can do this. You say that there isn't really anything good that can come out of it. I say there is. I say that now you're opening society to where they can see that there are individuals that can make it, that can have a life, that can be someone. They don't have to be scared and think that they have to be isolated or segregated into, you know, facilities or, you know, into places that they don't feel like it's home. And they have found home and now you're wanting to take home away from them because you're not comfortable. And I'm saying I will do whatever it takes for you to be comfortable. It's been stated that the doors are not open, their doors are open. Not only is her door open, but this individual's actually walked across the street, and not necessarily her, but her husband walked across the street and gave us ice cream. So some of these statements aren't necessarily true. And then you say you have a difficulty with me as an individual in trust. I have never lied to anybody. I have tried to get certain criterias. For instance, I did go in to get a conditional use permit, not from the code enforcement. I went first to get my business license, I was told that six and under, I didn't need it. I also then went to code enforcement, I was told the same because of two different categories. One is a residential facility and one is a rooming house, and there is confusion. Now that these rooming houses are spreading and growing rapidly, there's more of an understanding. Now I'm told, yes, no, you do need it. The moment I was told that I needed it, I applied for it within a week and a half. I applied. And everything that was asked of me, I've been compliant. You wanted a flyer clearance, I got it. You wanted a business license, I got it. You wanted me to apply for the state, I applied. I've applied, they accepted my application. I have done everything that I could possibly do to secure safety for these individuals...
You have 15 seconds left. Go ahead and bring it to a close.
And to help the neighborhood feel safe. I am again saying to my neighbors, I will do the necessary things that is required of me and things to make you feel safe, but if you're not willing to have a resolution, if you're not wanting to do this, then it defeats the purpose and it doesn't help any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut in opposition? You have five minutes total for this rebuttal period.
Well, first of all, I want to make it clear, this is not about the residents. We care about the residents. The fact that they are lying in the streets, it's a danger to themselves and to the community in the aspect of, we don't know what's necessarily, what's going on with that mental patient. This is about the negligence of Pinky throughout the neighborhoods of ours and the next one that she facilitated, the other area, in which the documents I gave you states, shows that there is, is basically saying her negligence. She didn't follow the rules, she didn't do what she needed to do in regards to, in those two years to maintain the policy. In regards, she never gave us the policy. It is plain and simple, the neighborhood knows it, even the people in the other neighborhood know it, that they never received the policy. Even the people in the other neighborhood know it, that they never received the policy. So, because of that, we are concerned. This is about not the residents, because they need care. This is about Pinky's negligence, and the aspect of what she is not following the policies and regulations of what she has stated in her policy. I guess my closing statement would be, we're basically fed up with the negligence of Pinky and her business, Open Heart Home. Her business creates safety and concerns throughout the community and home residents. Regardless of what excuses she may give, running a business without a state license and a business license during the past two years continues to show the carelessness and disregard for the law. Pinky's business is detrimental to community's safety, wellness, and overall experience.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Anyone else like to rebut?
I'd just like to point out, in the paperwork that you have given, Pinky stated that the paperwork shows that she was only certified for the other address. As of May, March 2017, it showed, that paperwork is actually showing that there's vacancies. That paperwork is from the Kern County Mental Health website, showing that she has six residents there and two vacancies, for male and female, at the 93311 zip code address under Open Hearts. So, I don't know where it's stating that it's only for certification purposes. No, that was actually printed out by me, stating that it is open housing, that she has two vacancies at that address as of March 2017. Now, May, yes, that property has been removed. You should have both those papers. And so, obviously, I mean, it has, yes, she's certified, and it's certified showing that she has vacancies at that address as of March 2017. That's when it was last updated, and I downloaded that to my phone on April 10th, prior to the meeting that we had last. So, it has nothing to do with certifications. It has to show vacancies for the property. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to rebut in support?
Yes, how you doing? My name is Carlos Pacheco, and I live at 6114. I just want to say, you know, with all respect to these ladies, Pinky forgot to bring the one with no shoes, in very poor conditions. I mean, foul language to the people that drive by. And then also, she forgot to also bring the lady, I'm pretty sure you guys have a report of a scared lady getting lost in around 3:30, 4:30 in the morning. When I was warming up my car to go to work, she approached me. Her breath, it was alcohol coming out of her breath. It was not NyQuil or anything like that, so I don't know what kind of business she's running her house. You know, because the lady that approached me, and then after that, she went to the neighbor's house and got naked over there. She had beer alcohol in her breath. So, like I said, I really don't know what kind of business she's running there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to rebut in support?
Hi, my name is Emily Martinez. I live at 6107 Martinique Court. I'm the daughter that Dolores is saying that she's worried when I go to work at 5:00 in the morning. I start work at 6:00, so I leave like at 5:00, sometimes a little bit earlier, to go to Starbucks. And there are people walking to the Chevron on the corner all the time. And also, about a month and a half ago, she said, I was outside with my dog, and she had came home from the grocery store with an elderly man, and she left the door open to her house, and I heard her. She was like, hi, guys, like, this is so-and-so, he's going to be staying with us. I hope you guys all remember him. And they all greeted him, hello. So, it's not all women there at that house. And these six girls that she brought with her, I do not recognize three of them. We live right across from her. I've never seen three of those girls in my life, and I just seen two of them walking, I think it was on Monday, when I got home from jury duty. Two of those girls, that was the first time I had ever seen them. And one girl I had seen there, like, for like the past month. But other than that, I've never seen anybody else. But, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Anyone else like to rebut in support of Steph's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to counsel for comment and action, unless, Ms. Kitchen, you have anything further.
Just a point of clarification. Several residents brought up a second facility. There was a second facility that the city became aware of in March. Code enforcement was sent out to that site, and a citation was issued for operating without a conditional use permit at that site. And since that time, it's our understanding that that facility has closed.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Councilmember Sullivan, this is in your ward.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. My name is Jackie Sullivan, and this address is in Ward 6, so it's on my shoulders. First of all, Ms. Kitchen, you've done a great job. You know, there's a lot of information that really, no need for me to go over again. But, and Pinky, you did a good job presenting your position, and I think you do, you know, you do have a heart for this. But Pinky, you went about it all wrong. You know, you've been open for two years, and you should have done all of this good stuff before you received your first client. You are not showing a regard for the law. You are, you know, you've been very negligent. You didn't even have a business license from our city. You do now. I think you got it last month, maybe the month before. But these things are really a disrespect, a disrespect. You didn't build in any protection for yourself. You have, there's one man that came up and said he runs a licensed facility. That's what they're supposed to be. And the licenses are set up to protect the clientele, to protect the residents. And they're subject to inspection at any time. You haven't given yourself or your clients any of this protection. And so, the neighbors have good reason to be upset. You've given yourself no protection. So, you know, certainly, if you do it again, hopefully, you'll do it differently, but it's going to have to be down the road. And of course, your application has been accepted. All applications are accepted. But it can take quite a while, and believe me, there are inspections with good reason. So, it might go quickly, it might, but it's not right around the corner to get the state approval. It can be a very lengthy process. And to think that you didn't even, you're a businesswoman, operating a business with kind of a very needing category, but a difficult category. But, you know, everyone, it could have been legal. It could have been completely legal, but six or less. And then you've had eight without even a state license. So, you know, Ms. Kitchen, our staff has worked very hard on this and collected all of the information. Now, you're kind of getting things together, which is good. You know, being a good neighbor, having your home in a single-family neighborhood, the one lady has lived there for 22 years, so it's a very established neighborhood. The homes look very nice, which is wonderful. But yet, you know, there were trash problems. That should have, you should have been on top of that from immediately. When the sun arose, there should have been somebody out picking up the trash. The parking, you know, when, I live in a cul-de-sac, and when people park in front of my, and we, there's some, a house full of college kids being rented, but they're very good neighbors. But when somebody parks in front of my house on a regular basis, I don't like it. I go put a note on their window. I don't like that, because we have overflow parking very close, and that's just the way it's supposed to be. And so, I want people to follow the rules in my, on my street and in my neighborhood. But, you know, having eight residents, and, you know, that's against the law. That is against the law, having eight residents. You are subjecting yourself, if you would have had a license, you would have lost your license, so you would have been more careful. So, anyway, you know, you, if you're going to, if this is going to be your line of work, well, then you need to go along with the rules. You need to have respect for the rules. And believe me, the rules are for the benefit of everyone. They're for the benefit of the neighborhoods, but mainly for the safety of your residents. And there needs to be very good supervision. Obviously, there's something that has gone wrong with your supervision. So, because if there's not supervision, you, again, are subject to losing your license, if you would have had one. So, but you never had a license, not even a business license, for the city of Bakersfield. So, anyway, staff, you have, you know, we have discussed this, because I wanted to make sure that I had all of the information. And your appeal is heartwarming, and the ladies do deserve, but it's a shame that you didn't do a better job for your residents by making sure that you were running your home legally, that you were running your home licensed. And certainly with the business license, which is from the city of Bakersfield, which is very inexpensive and very easy to get. So, you know, it's a shame that you've put your residents in this position. And so, next time, you know, it will be done differently, hopefully. If it's not, we'll end up, you know, needing to have this discussed again with the city council, and I will feel the same way. If it's in my ward, everything needs to be done correctly, respecting the law, which is for the benefit and the safety of your residents. So, I wish everybody well, and I've heard there are no hard feelings. There's no reason, certainly on your side, to have hard feelings, because you didn't do it the right way. And, you know, your neighborhood feels very strongly about this, and you would have had no, you know, you could have had recourse, if it would have been done the right way. So, anyway, I'm sorry that, you know, this is always difficult, and I feel sorry for your residents, you know, but they need to, you know, you just need to run a real tight ship with something like this, because if you don't, there are going to be problems, and rightly so. So, anyway, I guess the, it's a little complicated. Jackie, you did explain it very well, that it needs to be, it's actually the residents that has brought the appeal against, has brought the appeal. So, I am recommending, of course, the council will, the council members will have, certainly be giving their comments, but my recommendation is to vote yes, to deny. And the CUP was, you know, CUP was for eight people without even a license. I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself, but anyway, that's pretty amazing. So, anyway, yes, to deny the CUP, and then, which will be supporting the appeal by the residents, by the neighborhood. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Does staff know where the application with the state is?
Vice Mayor Smith, the application with the state is pending. As Ms. Sullivan, or Councilmember Sullivan indicated, there's no sense of what the timing will be, but it has been submitted.
So, the state doesn't have two-month turnaround, six-month turnaround, nine-month turnaround? Have we asked that question?
To my knowledge, they don't have a statutory requirement for a turnaround. They may, but typically, in our experience, residents and operators have told us it can take anywhere from two months to two years, just depending on the complexities of the case. They are all unique.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm a little confused. So, this document, which I have to apologize, has some doodles on it, but I was doing math, because whoever Alma de Best is, is got quite a few facilities and a lot of space. But I noticed at the top of it says, "Note, room and board facilities are not licensed or monitored by any government agency." I guess I'm trying to understand, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that the facility is applied for a state license, but I'm under the impression that room and board facilities don't require a local license. And I think I'd be a rich man if I counted the businesses in Bakersfield that didn't have a city of Bakersfield license. What exactly is this facility required to have in order to have eight residents? I'm unclear.
Sure. Councilmember Rivera, in order to have eight residents, you would need a conditional use permit from the city. That's regardless of whether you have a state license or not. If you have a state license, you can have up to six without a conditional use permit. But as soon as you go over that six, state license or not, our ordinance requires the conditional use permit.
Okay, so let me rewind real quick. So, six or under does not require a conditional use permit, so long as you have the state license?
That is correct.
Why would the county put on this that room and board facilities are not licensed or monitored by any government agency? Do we know why they say that?
I don't have the same document that you have in front of me. We didn't receive copies. However, I'm not sure what the county's intent was with that statement. It could be a reference.
I mean, it even says, "Unlicensed room and board," and then says, "Certified only." I just think it's.
Okay. So, the reference to the license, then, is probably referencing the state license. And you don't have to have a state license if you wanted to operate, say, 20, but you would need a conditional use permit. So, the license reference is likely to the state. The state does not require you to have a license. It's an option.
Okay.
There's a difference between the state requirements and our local municipal code.
Okay. And so, I'm assuming, I'm correct in assuming that everyone else on here has a conditional use permit?
They would be required to, in our jurisdiction, and most others, yes.
Well, so, is there a breakdown somewhere where someone might operate them for two years without one? How do we not, how do we not discover that if they're, if they're, if they're at least communicating with the county? I mean, this list, I think someone shared, was pulled off of the internet from a public domain. What did we miss? Or is there a gap we?
Yes, actually, Councilmember Rivera, the county approached the city earlier this year with a list of facilities that had come to them to operate. And the county discovered at that time that a number of those had not gotten a conditional use permit through the city and should. And so, we've been working collaboratively with the county health department to address each of those situations.
Okay. So, then there are folks that, over the course of the last few years, have properly applied for a conditional use permit, prior to housing eight individuals?
Absolutely.
And have been approved?
Absolutely. We've approved, as was shown in the map earlier, 13 rooming houses since 2004, and those range anywhere from seven to 20. I think we may have even had one up to 40. But again, if you want to operate a rooming house facility, there is a process to go through.
Thank you. Again, it's an odd day, I think, to have this conversation, given we started with a workshop at 3:30 on homelessness and access to housing, and barriers to housing, chief among them being mental health. You know, I guess I have, I'm actually torn, based on, especially based on what I've worked in and done in the past, but too, based on the information we received earlier today. You know, I think there are nuances to this that I'm not entirely sure warrant evicting people from their home. And I think, truthfully, Councilwoman Sullivan would probably not enjoy my street, because everyone parks in front of my house, and on their lawns and all sorts of other things, and it's even more frustrating. But what bothers me is, you know, we've talked about access to housing and... I think the action we presumably are taking this evening, I think, is a step in the opposite direction. And I'm just, I'm just curious whether, you know, a proper inventory moving forward of room-and-boards operating in the city is warranted, and it sounds like we've got an inventory. Perhaps reaching out and working with everyone else is a prudent thing to do, because I'd hate for us to find ourselves in this situation in the future, because I think this is needed. And, you know, I, the map was, the map was a part of your presentation, but, you know, I have to point out that they're concentrated in certain parts of town, which I also think is unfortunate. And, you know, I hate to kick people out of their homes. So, I'm conflicted, and I'm certainly interested in what the rest of the council has to say, but this is tough. In the meantime, while she, while this particular room-and-board waited for the state license, she would have to shutter her doors completely. Is that correct? If she were to, I guess, evict two people, or whatever the formal process is, lose two clients, and reduce her number to six?
That's correct. Yet, without the state license, the most that you could have at the facility would be two. As soon as you rent to three or more, you're a rooming house. I do agree that this has kind of been, this is a complicated issue. It might be helpful to note that the state has taken a lead in kind of establishing a threshold for what is appropriate size for a residential neighborhood, and that's why the six or fewer preemption exists for those sized facilities. The state has indicated that anything larger than that warrants review on a case-by-case basis for consistency with the neighborhood.
Is that a recent action they decided to take?
It was several years ago.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. That's all I have.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor Go. Ms. Kitchen, in your presentation, you referenced 20 calls for service for the police department, and it was commented during the present, during the comments, that those, that many of those calls were health and welfare checks. Can you describe for the council what the nature of those calls were?
Sure, certainly. I believe Assistant Chief Domestahos is here from the police department, so I'll leave it to him to answer that question.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you. The calls for service that are listed in your packet are primarily from the residents in question. Health and wellness checks could be a variety of calls. Many of them are check-the-welfare. Check-the-welfare calls could be anything from a person feeling suicidal, a person locked in a room, a person who hasn't been seen in several days. So, here, without violating HIPAA laws, we have a variety of those types of check-the-welfare calls. There's also calls here for attempt to contact. There's forgery reports. There's 911, unknown situation, 911 hang-ups, peace disturbance, verbal peace disturbance, loud noises, or suspicious circumstances. So, there's a broad, a wide variety of calls for service that are described or listed in this packet.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kitchen, the conditional use permit process concerns for rooming houses the number of individuals living in homes and not the character of individuals living in homes. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And with that, you know, many of the comments I heard in support of the appeal this evening had to do with the character, the nature of those individuals living in the homes, and not necessarily the number of individuals, and that concerns me. You know, these are often individuals who are the most vulnerable in our community, who need a safe and deserve a safe and quality place to live, and it seems as though this should be appropriate. So, for that, I can't support the staff recommendation adopting the resolution. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to kind of walk through what we really see happening here. So, if the motion that has been made, the CUP is denied, she can keep two people there for whatever, and then, after X amount of time, maybe two months, maybe longer, she could get the permit for six people, and they would be back in. So, in the meantime, how do we evict those four people by six people?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Smith, I think your question is very appropriate. Here's another alternative. In the event that Councilman Sullivan's motion passes and the appeal is upheld, and the applicant decides not to do anything, not to evict anyone, and to continue in her current progress, it would be up to the city attorney's office to file a lawsuit against her, and we would then, at that point, move forward with the administrative penalties at $1,000 a day. And again, that civil process would take a while to actually get to a judgment, but that is another scenario that the council would be looking at. And then, in the meantime, of course, there's the overlay of the state and how long the state would take. While the litigation was ongoing, if the state came in and then provided Ms. Pinky with the application, we would thus withdraw our, probably withdraw our litigation.
Thank you. I'm, like Councilmember Rivera, struggling with where this is really going. I wish we knew better where the state was. I mean, if they're within 30 days or 45 days, then it seems ridiculous that we'd move forward with evicting and lawsuit and all of that. I perhaps would like to offer up a continuance and have staff follow up with state and see, you know, if we can have a better determination with where they're at, so.
I would suggest, Vice Mayor Smith, that if that's something that you're pursuing, you, the council may want to consider going back to the BZA recommendation. The BZA recommendation was to allow, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Kitchen, but was to allow the current situation to exist for six months, with the understanding that the state was going to come through within that time period. So, I believe, since the hearing has been closed, that that may be a better alternative to go ahead and adopt the BZA recommendation, and then come back in six months and see if the condition has been met. As the city manager accurately points out, you could also shorten that time period to two months or three months, or whatever you felt appropriate.
That's my feeling on what would be the best, but I am going to defer to Councilmember Sullivan.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you. This is, you know, this is certainly one of these issues. I think I'm normally very sympathetic with issues like this, and certainly have, and very sympathetic towards your clientele. So, I, I'm just sorry, I feel you did let them down, Ms. Pinky. And all of this should've been done a long time ago, because you've made your position very difficult with your neighbors, and it could've, it just could've, should've, there's always a could've, should've, but could've been done differently, and we do have neighbors to consider also. So, you know, now, my youngest daughter has an assisted living place for the elderly, and she's licensed, and it took her, it took her about six months to get a license. But they are, there are very strict requirements, for good reason. You're taking people's money for housing, and so, it, anytime that happens, there should be very, very strict. The state is tough, and they, it's all about, you know, we deal also with the neighbors, but yet, where your facility is concerned, the state regulations are totally for the, for the concern of your, of your clients. So, you bypassed all of this. So, you know, should we, should we say, see what, but I'm in a spot right now, too. You know, two months. Pinky, when did you apply, when did you send your, when did you get word that your license was, was received? Because I think it's a matter, accepted is received. When did you send it off?
I actually hand-delivered it. I drove it to Sacramento.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I drove it to Sacramento, and actually, it was this week. The application itself is long and drawn out. It consists of a lot of things, from a number of things. I have to go down the list.
It's a huge process.
It is, it is. And I, I'm really here, whatever, if that's done and completed before the hearing today. It was not just about day-to-day, I did hand-deliver it.
We can't hear you. Can you please come to the mic?
I was stating that I hand-delivered it this week. It, I tried to get it in sooner than that, but it has been a long process of trying to get it complete. It's been day-to-day. I mean, it has been a long, drawn-out thing.
Yeah, for good reasons, for health and safety.
Oh, yeah.
You know, for your clients.
Oh, yeah. So, it consists of things of sorts of having an administrator certificate through the state of California. It consists of having a clearance, fire clearance, physical things as far as myself, having a health screening, having CPR, and a long, drawn-out. I mean, step-by-step, I had to do all these things, and I did it in a small time period.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering why you didn't do this before you opened your business?
Because when I first opened up the business, room-and-boards were rapid, and everyone was doing it this way. I had no idea that I was doing anything that was illegal. I mean, I'm not, I wasn't the only one. I was, in a sense, kind of following. I did, you know, I, I actually administered, I was administrator at a licensed facility, so I'm very much aware of how licensing works.
Right, Pinky? Yes, okay. We're, this has been a long hearing.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, how many people do you have right now?
I have six individuals. I've always had six individuals. I put a request in for eight because of the four rooms.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. I am still thinking, now, you can have two legally, and so, I feel that the four of them should be put someplace, should be put someplace else temporarily until you are legally, until you have everything that you need and can be, can comply with state regulations for the benefit of your, of your clients. And really, even, even the comments, not only from the neighbors, but the comments from your clients, you know, aren't, didn't, didn't you say the, the doors are supposed to be locked at a certain time at night? You know, everyone is supposed to be indoors?
And that is correct, and that has always-
And that's not happening.
That has always, that has always been the case.
It doesn't sound like that's happening.
There, I actually didn't mention this.
Very brief.
I'm sorry, but I really need to cut, to cut her off at this point. The hearing has been closed. I mean, certainly, she can answer-
Thank you.
-concise questions to the council, but it can't really go too much further than that.
I agree, city attorney.
Should I have a seat?
Yes, would you please have a seat? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to stay with, you know, and I'm, it is perplexing, but I just think that, that, you know, we have neighbors here, and, and we have clients, and there has not been a tight ship at all. It has not been, it has not been handled in a, I mean, it's a big, huge responsibility to have people, have a business take, caring for, for, for clients, and it just hasn't been, you haven't been doing a real good job, in my opinion.
Councilmember Sullivan, does your motion stand?
My motion stands, yes.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. We have a tie.
We have a tie, Mayor.
This is, as people have voiced, a very, very difficult predicament. Certainly, for those who live in the homes, we care about your welfare, but I think in caring for people's welfare, we have to make sure that they are protected. And as Councilmember Sullivan has voiced, that protection, Ms. Pinky, has not taken place, and that then endangers those who are in the home. Certainly, as has been spoken earlier by some of my colleagues to my right, it is not the condition of the clients, that the residents of the home, that we are considering. It's not their mental health condition. That would not be appropriate under these circumstances. We are considering the violation of regulations that are set there for the protection of people who are the most vulnerable and people who need the protection the most. And so, while this is an extremely difficult situation, I am going to support staff's recommendation, and I would ask that we find a way forward to help relocate people during this time, and I will be personally following up with the appropriate parties on that measure. So, I am going to support staff's recommendation. Okay? Vote yes. Council and mayor statements at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. There's been an epidemic of spice use lately, and we passed our local ordinance, and subsequent to that, the county passed. There's the, within their ordinance, there's a few differences. I'd like to circle back to the Ledge and Lake Committee to explore those differences compared to ours, and to see if it's a fit for us or not. There's an ongoing problem on the Coventry Apartments, which is off of Coventry Lane, I believe. Recently, there was a double homicide in that area. It's, it's been a kind of a habitual problem. I have personally been through there and called city staff numerous times. City staff has been fantastic, but I just drove through yesterday, and there's burned-out cars and junk everywhere, and I really think the owner and/or owners of this complex really need to take responsibility. So, I'm going to ask staff, I know you've been actively involved with it, code enforcement, PD, solid waste, but also the city attorney. I don't know if there's a way we can take civil action on some of these owners to get them in compliance with the law and help the good residents that do live within that complex. Lastly, you know, we're struggling every year with our fireworks funding, and, you know, we have wonderful, wonderful community leaders and businesses that support the city year in and year out. But I do believe that, you know, the city should have some skin in the game, too. And with the administrative fines that have taken place, I'd like to see that, I don't want to use necessarily Lois's term of seed money, but some sort of contribution from the city, and I'd like staff to take a look at that, please. And I'd like staff to take a look at that, please.
Is there anyone else? Councilmember Sullivan.
Just very, very briefly, this was a difficult issue and I appreciate the divided feelings. I think we all had divided feelings, so they had to tip one way or the other. But I, last comment is that I think we have set an important, even though it was a difficult vote for all of us, I think we have set an important precedent that we do expect things where caring for others is concerned. We have, we do expect things to be done correctly for the benefit of the clients. So I would recommend, you know, I just hope, I wish the reporter was here. She's out there doing some important work. But, you know, the places that are not licensed, they need to apply for their license because it's just, we have to have law and order. We have to have, we have to have guidelines, and that's what the state license does. So, anyway, understand every vote and respect every vote. And, but I think it's important that we are moving forward in the direction that we are. This is kind of a test case for the city. I understand there are others that are going to be coming along, but those, the ones that are unlicensed need to get on the ball and protect, you know, just protect everybody by doing things the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this is Memorial Day weekend, and I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice and their families. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor Go, members of the council. Steve Telia, City Manager's Office. Just a very brief introduction to the presentation you're about to hear. At the request of Vice Mayor Smith and Councilmember Gonzalez, several local service providers were contacted by staff to help facilitate the discussion regarding the topic of homelessness in Bakersfield. So before you tonight, we have Louis Gill of the Bakersfield Homeless Center, Diane Contreras of Flood Ministries, and Carlos Baldovinos of the Mission at Kern County, who will facilitate the presentation and will be available for questions following that, as well as the staff you see here before you.
Welcome, Mr. Gill.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for the invitation to come discuss homelessness with the council. This is a first in my 17 years, and so we very much look forward to this opportunity. So we appreciate it. The solutions for homelessness are not simple, right? If you look at the pictures, you can see that it's everybody, right? So who exactly are homeless? That's a big question right now, and there's a lot of pressure in town, exactly where's the homeless population? Who's homeless? Who's doing what? You guys are getting asked a lot by your constituencies. So what we want to do first is kind of give you some demographics, talk about it. When we say homelessness, well, let's try this, homeless, what's the first thing that comes to your mind, right? It's probably a male, probably chemically dependent or drunk, unkept, right? They might have a cart of belongings, right? That's kind of where our head first goes. We also have a lot of single women that would qualify under those exact same categories. We also have families, living in cars, living outside, living in buildings that weren't meant to be lived in. When you have a family, you have multiple people that need help, not just a single individual. You've got a mom or a dad, sometimes both, and then the children. We have unaccompanied minors. So we have individuals often that have gone into foster care, and for problems either in their home or in their mind, they've walked away. And so now we have youth out there, and there are very few resources in all of Kern County for that population. And then we have individuals that served our country nobly, and for whatever reason, they have now found themselves without a home. And that's kind of the universe of the individuals that make up that homeless population. Now, to just bring the idea to your mind, it is very common for us to have, say, a single mom come. She'll be really deep in an addiction. Nobody's taught her how to parent. She is unwell and without the resources to maintain her home. So is there a single issue there? Is there a one-size-fits-all answer? Absolutely not, because what do you have? You have somebody that does not know how to be an adult. You have somebody that is so active in their illness that they struggle to make choices that are for the good of their family and themselves. Or while I've been at the homeless center, we had a Vietnam vet that stayed with us for years. He was schizophrenic. In his mind, if he took vet assistance, he was living on the dole. It took us literally years to get him to accept that he had earned that assistance, that he merited that help. Now, what would be the moral thing, right? Is it right to just put him out? Make him survive on the street? Or do we make sure that he's safe until we can get that help to him? Now I can tell you that he has a home and he is cared for, and he is doing well. The truth of the matter is, is that what we are discussing is we are discussing our neighbors, and we are talking about neighbors in crisis. So what causes homelessness? Well, it's pretty consistent that there's little to no income, physical, mental, illness or impairment, some sort of substance abuse problem. We're also seeing people released from incarceration that are increasing our rolls, some sort of sudden crisis. You've got your primary income earner has died. And so now the parent that did not earn income is left without the resources to care, and they fall all the way through. We're struggling to find affordable housing in Bakersfield right now. The stock is not abundantly available. Job loss and unemployment. We know that our big economic drivers are still struggling in Kern County. We didn't have water for a really long time and ag struggled. Where's oil today? Fifty-one, fifty-two a barrel? People aren't hiring. It affects the people that we need to serve. Our kids are aging out of the foster care system and there's no family to fall back on. So now they're young adults without, and I don't know about you, I have an 18-year-old son, he's not ready to fly, right? It takes time. And when you're lucky, you have people to fall back on when things get hard, right? If you have to, you can move back in with mom and dad. That's not often the case. Then we have people that they are told that they are loved by someone and they pledge to them. They have a family with them. And then they hurt them. And when we get people that flee for domestic violence, they run with nothing, right? We will find women that will just grab their kids and there are no clothes, no documents, no money. They just need to be safe. And then unfortunately, human trafficking is showing its ugly face in Kern County. And we find people that come through that ugly system. The truth is, there's a large portion of our community that is one paycheck away from losing housing. Many, many low-income families live right on the edge. So for you, how does the community respond to this phenomenon? So we've got, for illustration, we've got our nonprofit sector. So our churches, our faith-based community, our faith-based organizations and other nonprofits are in town, and we exist because of market failure. You can't earn enough money to be able to do this work. It requires support in order to do those services. On the government side, points of entry for this service is often, or for this population is often law enforcement. It used to be called Kern County Mental Health, but Behavioral Health Systems and the emergency rooms for the hospitals. Now, a place where those overlap, of course, donations from businesses and individuals where we get that. But for illustration for you, the city has emergency solution grants and contracts with different organizations in town to provide services. We also have been very fortunate to have investment in the job development program. We clean freeways. We work at the animal care facility. We also work at Green Waste. So there are ways that we are interacting. We know that this problem, this concern cannot be addressed with just one side of this equation. So how do the resources primarily come in? Right now, the largest investment comes from housing and urban development. That comes in two vehicles typically into Kern County and Bakersfield. HUD has community development block grants. A portion of CDBG is the ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grants. Those are then invested in the community with nonprofits that provide services to the population. The larger investment comes from what's called the Continuum of Care. It's an annual federal competition that brings dollars into different organizations here in town. On the other side, there's also a small investment by FEMA that has a program called the Emergency Food Shelter Program and provides funding for just that. But again, that's a modest investment. To visually give you an idea of how that investment looks, federally, it's about $5.4 million a year that comes in. That's all for our housing and services. The state also gets HUD money that gets distributed through the county, has a little over a half a million dollars available. County invests about $387,000. And then the city, $266,000, all through the vehicle of the Emergency Solutions Grants. Now, funding, at least from the government, primarily before contracted for services. People got frustrated because they just saw the roles of homelessness increasing and increasing. So they looked for a solution, and they took the mindset that the solution to homelessness is a home. So the investment before was primarily services, the smallest portion was housing. That has now changed. Now the majority of our dollars go to the housing assistance with a reduction in services. It is working. There are fewer people homeless, but with the reduction of services, we also have additional challenges. Now Housing First is the model that the federal government settled on, and I'm trying to do this as high-up and as easy without getting in the weeds with you as possible. But what this is, is primarily get people into housing as quickly as possible with as few barriers to getting into the program, and then provide supportive services once they're in housing. So things that normally, normally, in the past would have disqualified people if you're still active in your addiction, if you're mentally ill and we don't believe you're going to be able to maintain, that is no longer a disqualifying factor through Housing First. People were very scared about that shift, but again, nationally, it is proving that it does have a positive effect. Of those dollars that are being focused now on that Housing First model, they said, all right, we have a finite amount of money. Are we going to be a mile wide and an inch deep, or are we going to try and move the bar on a given population? Inside homelessness, there are chronically homeless as opposed to situationally homeless. And it's a very long, complex definition, but this breaks it down pretty easily. So you've got to be homeless, living in a shelter or not, in someplace not meant for habitation, for more than a year, or for 90-day periods in three years, also with a diagnosable disorder, illness or impairment. So you need those three qualifying factors to qualify for chronically homeless, and that's where the majority of housing investment has taken place. So those are the individuals we've been moving into permanent housing. And now I would like to introduce to you Carlos Baldovinos from the Mission.
Mayor Go and Council, thank you for the invitation this afternoon. So Resources. I have given to you folks this packet of information that gives a thumbnail sketch of the services that are provided in the community, but also what the Kern County Homeless Collaborative provides. Also gives you a point-in-time snapshot as well, as well as some other information, too, for you to read at your leisure. But some resources. We have Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault. They primarily deal with victims of sexual and physical abuse. The Bakersfield Homeless Center, Women and Children's and Families, Housing, California Veterans Assistance, I'm going to talk about that in just a few moments. Griffin's Gates, they provide more housing. Catholic Charities, that's a payee service and a feeding program. City of Bakersfield. Clinica Servista, which they provide substance abuse treatment facilities, and they have a clinic on Baker Street. Community Action Partnership of Kern 211, that's a referral system. Flood Bakersfield Ministries, they provide outreach, permanent housing and placement. Golden Empire Affordable Housing, obviously that's housing. Golden Empire Transit. Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance, that's a legal counsel assistance for low-income and homeless, infer housing and renters' rights. Then part of the collaborative as well is Honorable Harvey H. Hall, Housing Authority of the County of Kern. Stephen Pelts is here with us this afternoon as well. At the very end, if there's any questions for him, he can be available for that, too. They provide housing vouchers and housing as well. Independent Living Center of Kern County, that's voucher program, and they work with persons with disabilities. Kern County Department of Human Services, that's Rapid Rehousing Services for Families. Kern County Superintendent's of Schools, they work with homeless youth in the McKinley Vento. Kern County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Legal Village LLC, that's Sober Living Facility. St. Vincent's De Paul. Meals, Stewart's Inc., Payee Services. The Mission at Kern County, Housing Recovery Programs for Both Men and Women. United Way of Kern County, they're the collaborative applicant. And Women's Center, High Desert Domestic Abuse Facility in Rich Crest. And lastly, coming soon is Behavioral Health Recovery Station. So the housing assistance, how the way it works is you have the housing vouchers, and they go into permanent supportive housing, veteran affair supporting housing, and then that also trickles down to Section 8 housing. And then you have, on the other side, you have Rapid Rehousing, which is an income-based temporary assistance, and they provide the first month's rents, deposit, and it's also income-based as well. As far as outreach, you currently have two full-time workers, one part-time worker, funded through the state and county ESG. Then Flood and the Mission at Kern County are primarily responsible for those services. And Flood and The Mission at Kern County are primarily responsible for those services. And for the city outreach, you have one part-time worker funded through the city ESG, and that is, Flood Ministries is in charge of that, and they have that person at 30 hours per week. So employment opportunities. About two years ago, three years ago actually, several organizations got together, and I mentioned them right here. It's a collaboration between the Bakersfield Homeless Center, City of Bakersfield, Downtown Business Development Corporation, Garden Pathways, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, and The Mission at Kern County. That is a program that is giving, has two workers per week that are formerly homeless, and then right now they're working primarily in the arts district. And we're looking to expand that in the days ahead with some additional funding. But that is currently funded by the Hall Family Foundation. That's going to be a two-year funding opportunity. Now, we started with this program last year. We kicked it off, I believe it was April of 2016, and Lake Family Foundation helped us to get us started. So we were seeing just a lot of good work happening with this program. I just want to be clear, this job, the jobs that these men are not doing are just, they're not just, they're not just cleaning up downtown Bakersfield. But there are to engage the homeless individual and to help them get into supportive services, like The Mission, The Homeless Center, and many other organizations. So it's, we're trying to use the cleanup as an aspect to just get those folks engaged and get them into some sort of services. And then lastly, you have veteran services, and that's with the California Veterans Association Assistance Foundation. And they work with the Renegation of Program, Permanent Housing, Supportive Housing, Transitional Housing, and Emergency Services. And they're doing a great job. Deb Johnson leads those efforts, and they're doing a lot of good work with our veteran population. And with that, I'm going to give it to Diane Oliver from Flood Ministries.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'm here to present to you the gaps. So I'm going to start with, as you can see, the point of engagement. Our outcome, our favorable outcome is shelter and housing. I'm going to begin with the outreach. Outreach is really a unique piece. It is the human element, right? It is when one person is reaching out to the other and they're offering assistance. So we would think, well, you know, that's easy, right? The connection will happen immediately. But unfortunately, it is more complicated. It becomes very complicated. Why is it complicated? It's complicated because our outreach person begins to build a relationship with that person who is experiencing homelessness. It takes, on average, 17 contacts in order to build that trust and begin moving forward in a process. So our outreach worker, when they engage, they begin to find out what the story is. You know, there's a story behind everything, and there's no two stories alike, you know? It could be an addiction that contributed to their homelessness. It could have been a loss of a job. It could be mental illness, where they weren't able to sustain the housing they were in. Their behavior just became too outrageous that they were evicted from their unit. There's lots of scenarios. But what our outreach person does is they start to hear the story, put the pieces together, and provide resources. And is it that the individual didn't have the resources? Is it that, you know, they're resistant to services? Our outreach workers do encounter those who, because of maybe substance abuse, maybe because of their mental illness, refuse. Our typical thing, even when people call, I always say, you know, "We don't wish that you continue on the street. Let us refer you to one of the local shelters." Now, that doesn't, that's not always the answer for them. They're resistant to services. So those that we see on the street and our outreach worker is engaging with, you know, like I said, the pieces have to begin to be put together. And for persons experiencing homelessness, lots of times it is low income, low income, meaning that either they have no income or they have very low income. And also, there's other barriers. Could be substance abuse, could be mental illness. So what is the appropriate ultimate housing? It is those supportive service housing that Lewis spoke of. It is those housing options that are the most suitable for those that we encounter on the streets. And then it's a process. You know, it is about gathering documents. Some of these folks do not have the vital documents that are required to then move along the path into housing. So it is about require, you know, assessing those documents. And also it is, and if we get to that point, you know, then it's an application, you know, and then it's interview. And then it's, ultimately, it is housing. On average, even if the scenario is perfect, somebody is not resistant and we engage quickly, and they have documents, which is really rare, but if they have documents, it could be 120 days from time of engagement to housing. For that person, it's a lifetime. For us, it's a lifetime. Because we're engaging and re-engaging and re-engaging with these folks. You know, but it isn't always perfect, you know? We work them, with them in their mental illness, in their substance abuses, and just their, they're not trusting, you know? They've not had success. They've not had success with, with just the traditional accessing services. You know, the folks we typically encounter are those who typically would not go and access traditional services. So the outreach piece is very vital, but it's also complicated. It's not go out, they go directly to the shelter, or they go directly into housing. It is a complicated piece that takes time. And so really, supplemental dollars are needed to add more street outreach workers. That way, we have more folks seeking and engaging with those on the streets. Right now, we have one part-time worker that works 30 hours a week. He also responds to code compliance calls. You know, he also responds to other calls that we receive. And so ultimately, it really is the additional of supplemental dollars to add to the team of people reaching out to those that are homeless. Then we have coordinated entry and assessment. Coordinated entry and assessment is required. It's federally required for HUD and its partners. And it would, what, the view of coordinated entry is really to develop a system that is a seamless county-wide single entry, where those experiencing homelessness, single individuals, families, or youth can access services and housing. Unfortunately, Kern County is developing this program, but unfortunately, there is no dollars attached to this activity. So again, supplemental dollars in order for us to truly create and, you know, and have our coordinated entry and access is very important. Mental health outreach. Years ago, we did have a service provider that went out and they would respond to those with mental illness on the street. Unfortunately, those services are no longer available. So what happens, we all see it, right? Our person's experiencing homelessness, they're living out their symptoms right in front of us. We, as service providers, see it daily. Our outreach workers see it daily. And I'm sure, out in the community, maybe driving or maybe going out to dinner, you also see it, right? You see those who are living out their symptoms in the community, for all the community to see. So what we, what we do have is we have the Met Team. The Met Team responds, but the initial responder, before the Met Team is called, is the Bakersfield Police Department. So we have seen a few scenarios that have happened with that. We see somebody who definitely needs to access mental health. And what happens? We call Bakersfield Police Department and they respond. They're wonderful, but they have, their job is to then speak to the person, evaluate them. And if this person can clearly, they have a plan, they have a plan of where they're going to get their next meal, they can pull it together long enough, then the call isn't made to the Met Team. But yet, we, as a service provider, have definitely seen someone who is suffering from mental illness, and we feel, we feel they're a threat to themselves, or they could be a threat to others. Now, another scenario with that situation could be that, that the Met Team is contacted and the Met Team comes, comes in, and what they do is they then take somebody and put them under observation for 24 hours. And then that 24 hours is over, and then what happens? That person is then released back into their homelessness. And as I'm telling these scenarios, actually, for me, I have individual persons that just flash in front of me, that these stories are true stories of things we experience as service providers. You know, we have a woman who, who we know very well, and she suffers from severe mental illness. Unfortunately, her situation is that she does have a payee, which is good. But what happens is she has that payee pay for a number of days in a hotel. And so she's in the hotel, and then by the end of the month, it doesn't pay for the whole month. So by the end of the month, she's back at our door. And she is behaving, you could say she's behaving badly, you know? Because she's just, she's experiencing, she's living out her symptoms right in front of us, right? But we're not able to pursue a process because she's not homeless. She has a hotel, she has a payee, she has a hotel, right? For majority of the month. So she's not considered homeless. And there are a lot of, you know, there are just a lot of, a lot of barriers. So really, the shortage of persons to respond to those with mental illness, you know, and really that soft touch, right? Because we've experienced where Bakersfield Police Department, we even hesitate sometime to call just because we know that if we call, sometimes we ruin that relationship with that client, right? We're trying to complete a process with them, and they're fearful. Because if they come back and they, they display those symptoms again, we might call again, right? So they disappear and we don't see them again. So unfortunately, that, that's what happens as well. Low-income housing stock. Of course, we all know, you know, housing for many does not look like housing for you and I. You know, so really, we all, and we all know, you know, with, there are a lack of units, and then there is that burden of high rents, right? And so for our, for our clients who are persons who are experiencing homelessness, really, the real deal is those supportive housing placements. That is the real deal for us, right? And that's because they're low barrier, you know? And also, they come with supportive services. So what does that mean? That means that there's somebody who does aftercare. There's somebody that checks on them. You know, "Did you check your mail? Did you do, you know, did you pay your PG&E? You know, are you having problems with your neighbors?" Those kind of things, right? So that's really the real deal for us. That's where we're trying to get them into those supportive housing. Now, unfortunately for us also, there's not enough dollars for those supportive housing either. We have, we have some housing that, that actually, there's support service, and there's not dollars to pay for that staff to do that. So that becomes a burden as well, but it is very vital. Why? Because we want them to retain their housing. Because if something goes sideways, then unfortunately, they return to their homelessness. So really, these gaps are really surmountable when you add them all up. You know, outreach is difficult. We don't have enough dollars to add to an outreach team. You know, coordinated entry doesn't have any dollars to support that activity. You know, mental health, we struggle with outreach for mental health. And then, you know, our low income, we need more low income in our community for individuals such as the ones that I have shared that are experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
You still with me? I know it's a lot of information, right? We're in it every day, and it all makes perfect sense to us, but there's a lot of pieces to it. So what we've tried to do is kind of give you a history, kind of who's doing the work, and then where we're falling short right now and need some help. But also, what we want to do is give you a little bit more information on how we're moving forward and what you might have questions about. So, we have been successful. That's the truth. So if you look in 2007 to 2016, it's a 50% reduction in who we found on a daily basis in the point-in-time count. Now, we also did a homeless census this year. And there's been an interesting amount of pushback about the census this year, because it also shows a reduction, but people are seeing more homeless people. So this is what I need to tell you. We were required to change the way we count this year. There was a federal mandate that changed the hours that we count. And so it, in our opinion, created a new baseline for us. So instead of looking at this as what's going on out there, this is a starting point for us. And quite honestly, it's going to take us a couple of years of data and doing it the same way to know exactly how well we're doing. We're required to report this every year. So I don't want everyone to get concerned about that number today. But again, we had to change what we do to comply with housing and urban development. So we're the safety net, right? We're so that people don't have to go splat on the street or that we can get them back in. Our census told us at least, we found about 800 homeless people on a day, right? But if you look into our database, you'll see that over 3,800 people a year fall into homelessness that we make contact with. We've described to you its complex and how you help them. There's not a simple solution. And it's not just about, here's a place to live, everything's now hunky-dory. Right? There are many aspects to those lives. So the scope of services are significant. Individuals don't show up with one problem. They often have many problems, and if it's a family, each one of those family members have concerns that need to be addressed. Now, what else is going on in our population? Well, as a society, we decided that we were going to change how we addressed low-level crimes. Right? So AB 109 has put a lot of pressure. Early release has done just that. And so individuals that our law enforcement would normally be picking up and would be incarcerated are no longer there, and they're hitting the streets, and we're seeing that pressure. I know we're seeing the pressure in our food lines, people just coming in for meals, people seeking emergency beds. I know that the mission has also seen that. If you talk to any of the service providers in our homeless collaborative, they would tell you the exact same thing. We have Prop 4757 that are about to get into action for us. That's going to add additional stress. Now, the other thing is that we see lots of people panhandling, and there's been a lot of rigmarole about that in this city, right? With lots of different personal feelings about it. This is what you need to know. A lot of people that you see downtown aren't necessarily homeless. Heroin, for years, was on the decline. We dealt with meth, right? Tweakers were what we had to deal with. The opioid crisis has created an entire new generation of people that are doing whatever they need to do to fix. That's a significant portion of the people that you're seeing on the street that are being claimed to be homeless. It is really rare that I see somebody I know that we've provided services for, asking for change. I've been doing this 17 years. That is not a common thing for me. So what's coming? Well, the administration released their proposed budget. They had told us they were thinking about it, and it's there. So in Housing and Urban Development, our largest funder for services throughout the nation, here in Bakersfield and Kern County, they're projecting a 16% cut. We don't know how that's going to be affected. They are still recommending for the complete elimination of the Community Development Block Grants. Inside CDBG, that's the Emergency Solutions Grants. That's the vehicle that the city has traditionally invested in these services. And just to bring back to your mind, it's somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars. They're also proposing to eliminate the line item FEMA that provides the Emergency Food and Shelter Program. Locally, donations have been affected by our reduction in oil prices. Ag did not have water. Again, the two largest economic engines in our area have been trying to figure out how to survive. They've been cutting back to get to efficiency so that they could keep people on payroll. They have reduced that kind of community support. So what you're looking at is a potential significant reduction. What we tried to give you is, this is our universe now. Right? This is how we hold the line to what we're doing today. Any reduction in that support will increase the homeless rolls. They're talking about reducing assistance to Section 8, which is a direct reduction of households that will be assisted through the housing authorities throughout our country. Oh, and a small plug, we are really lucky in Kern County, in our housing authority. They are very focused on this population. It's not just homeless that they help, right? But they have taken a stand that they will utilize that resource to help the most vulnerable in our community, and we are very grateful for that. There are a lot of towns, counties, that don't have that luxury. And so, with those reductions, we will have upcoming challenges. We can face them together, but it's going to take working together. Now, this is what you need to know. We've been talking a lot about systems, we've been talking about funding mechanisms, we've been talking about organizations and government entities. What we're really talking about is moms and their kids, talking about somebody's son that got lost and just never came home because they were ill. We're talking about our neighbors that have reached a point of crisis that they can't care for themselves, and truly, we are judged on how we care for the least of these. And so, we are very grateful for this opportunity, and we would like to open this up to any questions.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your sharing. Councilmember Gonzalez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first thank the City Manager's Office for honoring the request to have this presentation today, and I want to thank all of the service providers for being here and for preparing what I felt was a very informative conversation, discussion. I want to ask first, you know, I hear all the time from various different folks, and they say that homeless people are coming from different parts of the state into our community, and they're being sort of dropped off here, but as I look at the census for 2017, out of all the respondents, only 3% reported that they were dropped off or dumped, and it's actually stated here, dumped here into Kern County. However, 26% have responded that they indeed came from another part of the country. And so, can you just describe as the Executive Director of the Homeless Shelter, and Carlos, perhaps you can chime in as well from the mission's perspective, what has been your experience just anecdotally, in terms of who's coming and who's homeless in our community?
Okay, you want to start? Yes, thank you for the question. We do, actually, at the mission, our staff actually does outreach with, outside of our gates, because we're seeing more and more of a population just coming and just hanging outside, and we want to bring them in. If we can, we have the facility to come, and the beds available, come on in. We want you to be in the shelter, but they say, "You know, I'm not from here, I'm just passing through. Can I get a bus ticket to Oakland?" You know, so we're basically, according to that document, yeah, I mean, you would call it, they were dumped here. And we try to get them to their destination, but again, it takes dollars to move people out into a different, to their home city. So yeah, we do, from time to time, get that. We are getting, actually, I was talking to the person that joined me here, that's Steve Peterson, he actually is my Director of Programs at the mission, and some folks are do coming from LA. I know that's been talked about for a long time, but, you know, LA has a problem with the homeless population. And so, from time to time, we do get them up here. So I think it's a combination of things, Councilmen, that we're getting.
And I think you can see from the census that the majority of people are right here from home. There are definitely transitory people, and we have seen groups of youth riding the rails, right? We'll look up outside, and all of a sudden, there's 10 kids, 16 to 19 years old, that are there for a minute, and they grab a train, and they're gone. All right? So there is that population, but I can tell you that there have been, in our experience, the majority of people are from right here. Now, when we have had problems, I will tell you that, in the past, I have gone to other continuums of care down south and told them, "If you're going to continue to send people to us at this level, you're going to pay us for the services," because we have an allocation for our folks. But I think that that concern is greater than the actual problem.
You know, it's interesting, I was at a conference earlier this year for the International Downtown Association, and many communities feel that their homeless population, or the rise in their homeless population, is a consequence of homeless people coming from another part of the state. And so I think that's something that we hear about all throughout the state.
Is there one other thing I could speak to that real quick?
Sure.
The other side to that is that some cities have taken the stance that what they want to do is start providing bus tickets to everybody that they find, right? Like, "Where are you from? Okay, hey, let me buy you a ticket." Like, we'll do it if we know that there's a place for them to land, there's a family for them to go to. But some cities just ship people out. That's called Greyhound therapy, and it's a really backward concept.
While you're up here, I'd like to ask, what is your occupancy right now at both shelters? And what is the current average length of stay?
If you take all of our facilities, we actually have about almost 300 people per night stay with us. That's between the shelters, that's our recovery programs for both men and women and transitional units.
Out of how many beds?
We're talking, if you had the shelter, we're about 250 beds in the shelter. So if you had, I'm talking the whole campus.
Okay.
That's when, when I look at my numbers, it's about 300 per night that we're housing.
So you're running above capacity?
Well, we have some room. We do have some rollaways that we can actually have in our day center that we can outfit people. We actually use them during the wintertime, when it's cold outside, people don't, I mean, right now, when it's a little bit warmer out, people, they could camp out and do their thing outside, but during the winter, they don't want to be outside. So they, you know, they tend to come in more during that season.
And the average length of stay?
We're probably averaging about six months. Again, just in the shelter, from a shelter standpoint. Now, if you had our recovery programs, that's probably a year and a half.
Okay.
And between our two facilities, we have a little bit over 200 beds between the Bakersfield Home Center and the Emergency Shelter for the Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault. And the average stay, somewhere between four and seven months, depending upon the family. We also have people that are there for two nights, and then they're gone. But that would be an honest answer.
Great. Thank you. I have a question for Diana. Diana, how many people can one outreach worker, so the city has one outreach worker that we fund part-time?
Right.
So how many homeless individuals is that one person able to case manage with that time allotment?
On average, for a year, it's, and engaging where they don't lose contact is about 53. But again, there's a greater number, you would probably multiply that by, you know, several, that they actually have, like, maybe didn't, completed an intake, started an assessment, but for some reason, it's, you know, didn't actually get to the point where there was a re-engagement. You know, either they lost track, or the person was resistant. But I would say that's more into, you know, probably triple that number, but 53 is really the amount per year that that person has been able to continually engage.
Engage ongoing case management. To build that relationship for their 17 contacts, I get it. So, you talked about permanent housing. Once they're in permanent housing, those services don't stop. Case management is still required.
They continue on. This is, our agency alone, we have 298 households that were formerly homeless.
And how long do you provide those services after families are housed?
Ongoing, the lifetime of the voucher.
Okay. And speaking of vouchers, Stephen Pels is in the audience. Thank you, Stephen, for being here. Can I ask you, how many vouchers are available at the current moment, for homeless individuals?
Certainly, we have roughly, almost 1,000 vouchers between the Continuum of Care Programs, and then voucher programs that we've set aside under our Housing Choice Voucher or Section 8 program.
And how many of those are available for individuals on the streets today?
Well, they're, most of those are utilized, so we have some that are turnover vouchers, where somebody leaves the program, we're able to reissue it, and we do have, so there's maybe a couple dozen in that category. Then we do have a new grant that we received last year from HUD that is almost full, that was 80 vouchers. Another one that's supposed to come online in the next couple of months, it was announced in December, but it takes HUD seven months to get a grant out, so that'll be another 40 vouchers for homeless persons. And I just want to mention, the services are an absolute critical piece, so the agencies that have spoken to you today are instrumental in making the housing a success, because the worst thing you can do is give somebody the keys to a department without the supportive services, because they will get evicted and then be worse off than they started. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And then my final question is, I hear this all the time from throughout the community, is why not just create a homeless camp somewhere out, far away from the city, and just have bus everyone out there? Now, the research that I read, that has such a deleterious effect on the homeless individuals, their families, especially those folks who have substance abuse issues or who are disabled. Can you just, I'd like to hear from the practitioners, if they can speak to that, and why we should be very cautious at taking that approach?
So I'll start with this piece. There's some interesting data coming out of some of the cities that have started tiny home communities. They are service-rich environments, and they're not placed out in the sticks. They're in town, where people can get to services, and they can make appointments, and use public transportation, and make it to their doctors. The thought of developing a camp out of town for extremely low-income people, I do not believe that that is the morality of this city. That seems exclusive and demeaning in a way that I have never seen the council take action. So that would be shocking to me. And I could guarantee that if it became a proposal, you would be hearing from me on a regular basis.
Thank you, Louis. That's a horrible idea. I mean, when you talk about, I mean, you saw what that happened in the 50s and 60s, 50s and 60s with ghettos. Obviously, that did not work in our large metropolitan areas. Actually, it made it worse off. So when you look at doing a camp just for the homeless population, just like we saw about three years ago, two years ago, just on Union Avenue, that was a complete disaster. I mean, these folks were, they had their own mayor, by the way, and they had their own police chief, and just different things, how they wanted to govern themselves. So people need governance, and sometimes, most of the time, you don't want to put people like that to govern themselves. So you have chaos, then you have all sorts of issues with, you know, addiction and prostitution, and you name it. So I think creating something like that would create a bigger problem than it is. I do think that there's a lot of solutions that we can come up with as a community to tackle this issue. It's not going to be a one-day solution, but it's going to be an ongoing solution. And we got our heads together, there's some great people in council and government, and then you have some good providers in the community, I think we can make some things happen in the days ahead. I'm confident, at least.
Great.
I want to say one thing about that. About the Union Street encampment, I really want to say thank you to the city on that one, because city staff contacted the service providers and said, "Okay, let's figure out how to work together with this," instead of just pushing them somewhere else, right? And we had a lot of really positive outcomes. It was a different approach, and it worked well. And I thought that that was outstanding, and it's a great model for all of us.
Great. Great. Thank you, Louis, and thank you all again. That's the end of my questions. I do want to say, I also want to recognize the police department who work very hard, and the impact team are out there day in and day out, and I'm looking forward to hearing from them in a future workshop. So thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I apologize for being tardy and missing the first part of your presentations, but the truth is, I got to work with you, many of you, for the better part of like a year and a half, and learned a whole lot during that process. And at the time, helped facilitate a homeless placement program, which was extremely challenging, and is still challenging. So I guess I, I've got some questions, but I've also got some, I don't know, actions for staff, because I think there's some proactive things we might, we might start doing. Councilmember Gonzalez asked a little bit about the voucher program. I found that one of the biggest barriers was affordability for folks classified as homeless. I can tell you how many times I sat down with young women at the Alliance, for example, who were making $315 a month. That was, or $515 a month. They're always very common numbers you'd hear, and they had three kids. And $315 doesn't get you an apartment, in most circumstances. And $315 doesn't get you an apartment in most circumstances. And so, you know, folks would bend over backwards, we'd figure something out, we'd get them in, and then we'd run into that problem you heard about earlier, where then payments weren't made, and then an eviction had to come. And it's a ripple effect for everyone, because it hurts the affordable housing project, because those are very tight projects to begin with. It hurts the resident, it hurts the residents around them, because it then impacts funds available for other services. So I always found that to be the biggest issue. What, what other resources are available, or what other resources could be made available to bridge that affordability gap for individuals trying to get into housing? What do you need?
That's a very large wish list. But what I can tell you is what other cities have done.
Okay.
I know it's the T-word. In Florida, they have implemented taxes on hotel rooms, and it has dramatically changed their ability to provide services in some cities. Okay, in for a penny, in for a pound. In other cities, it's not uncommon for CDBG dollars to also go for service provision. They've primarily gone for curb and gutter and construction projects here in Bakersfield. And so that is a couple of aspects that could be used. And then, I can't believe I'm saying, general fund is always an option.
So I'm glad you touched on the CDBG component, because, you know, really, am I urging for the last few years, with respect to southeast Bakersfield, we have invested a lot in infrastructure. It's been a vital resource, not only for that, it's been a vital resource for funding for programs like yours. It's also a vital resource on the home front and, and helping facilitate future projects for housing. I see it as the single greatest threat this community probably faces, if we lose those dollars. And I'm, truthfully, really disheartened by the commentary I hear around it, because I hear words like "social engineering" and other things, and to describe programs like CDBG. And, you know, I'd love for people making those comments to visit a community like Bakersfield, which, which isn't necessarily wealthy to the degree that LA or San Francisco is, yet we try to make do. It's a vitally important program that I think a lot of folks rely on. I'm curious, you know, it was either yesterday or this morning, I don't recall, but there was a, a nice piece about Majority Leader Kevin McCarthy being President Trump's man in Congress. And I spent some time in DC, maybe two weeks ago, and talked a little bit about tax reform and what was happening on the budget front. And they, it is not necessarily a conversation, at least as of yet, being driven simply by the administration. So I'd, I'd ask that our colleagues maybe indulge the idea of, of having our staff reach out to his office, to Majority Leader Kevin McCarthy's office, to see how he might be able to help us, how he might be, might be able to add clarity, and perhaps we already have. I'd love to hear what, what we're hearing back from DC on that.
Councilmember Rivera, we, we staff met with the representatives from both of our congressional offices that are local here, to go over what programs we do with CBDG and how it helps the community. And I think there's a tour with one or both of them, certainly McCarthy, that's coming up with next week, so to think about in the field and look at some of the things that are, that are in place. So we are making efforts to educate about the significance of the money.
Okay, so I, I would, that's great. I would love to get maybe some progress updates on that, because if, if a, if a moment arises where maybe we need to draft a resolution, or make it a stronger point that, hey, this is actually a really big issue for this community, I think we should be ready to do that. I'm curious, you brought it up, the hotel room tax. What, what other, could you give me maybe a community or two that, that are doing that?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you the city. I've, I can, I can bring it back to the council. What I can tell you is that, much like California, it's an environment where you can sleep outside all year long. And so for them, they had a lot of people that they were not able to serve. They looked for a mechanism that could provide some sort of assistance, and they have a lot of travel. So that's where they looked. They were like, okay, we have people coming in, let's go ahead and tax that, and it's resulted, and I can remember, it resulted in about $5 million in services. And I apologize, I can't remember the name of the city.
Okay, that, that's fine. I'm, I'm curious, because I live in Bakersfield, I don't generally stay in Bakersfield hotels very often. What sort of, what sort of taxes do we already collect? Do we have, could you give me an idea of what we collect taxes for and where they go, if any, thing?
Councilmember Rivera, we have a 12% transit occupancy tax, or hotel tax. It's been at that level for quite a few years. And the state has imposed mandates now that consideration of change is mandatorily on an election basis. That money here goes to fund the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the non-self-supporting portion of the Arena Convention Center, much of it goes to capital requirements of the general fund, air conditioning for the police department, fire station renovation, those kinds of things.
Okay. So, you know, when I stay in San Jose, or San Francisco, or San Diego, or certain parts of LA, every once in a while, I do my due diligence, and I look at my, the checkout bill, and I see, you know, I'll see all sorts of different small fees, like 20 cents or 15 cents I'm paying for something. Are those the types of fees that would require a general election vote? Do we know? Yeah?
The city attorney is saying yes.
Oh, okay. Well, that kills that idea, I suppose. I'm not sure. I guess that's all I have for now. I'll come back. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just, I appreciate your work, and great work for the community and for the people you serve, and appreciate you coming here and sharing. Couple comments. It's often discussed as being a downtown problem or along the river problem, but, you know, as a Ward Four council member, and recently as a substitute Ward Five council member, I, I am getting concerns throughout the community. Can you address, is that something new, or it's always been spread out through the community? You talked about the census and how it's changed. Do you feel that, yes, we are reducing, or, or the census was not accurate, and, and the situation's really growing? Or what is, the feeling I get from the community is, is the community feels that the problem is expanding rapidly.
Sure.
And, you know, what, what's the reality of that?
Well, again, since 2007, we have seen a reduction overall homelessness. This year, because of the point-in-time count and the way that we change the way we count, I can't say that that number actually is a reduction from the year before. And again, what's happened in our society? AB 109 has had a real effect, right? The heroin crisis right now is having a real effect. There are individuals out there that are very visible, and they are hard to not see. Now, as to other parts of the city, people have been camping all over this city for a long time. With the river full of water, people are not able to hide as well down in the river as they used to be, right? Because there's places inside the trees that just aren't available anymore, because they're underwater. But there are definitely folks that have been citywide for a long time.
No, I agree with Louis. I mean, once those folks were, you know, the encampments were taken out, the folks started coming into the community, and we see them actually by the mission. They've come from Oildale, and they've come, you know, right down the heart of Bakersfield, Old Town Kern, and you're just seeing a lot more of that problem. But that's where we come in, and we're like, we outreach those folks for them to come inside. They don't have to stay outside. It's not, you don't, you don't have to. But a lot of them, they make that choice. There, again, there has been that decrease, but I do think you're seeing it a little bit more, you know, with just some of the river, some of the river sweeps and those things that's happened in recent days.
Thank you. I, I love water and the river, I guess it causes problems also. I, I just want to reinforce the, the great work that I think the community has done with you, with, with the job opportunities at the Greenways and the animal shelter, and, you know, that is a very unique solution that, that I think has done great good throughout the community.
I would agree, and it's been a wonderful opportunity. Again, there has to be support around those individuals in that job, because something has happened in their life that has to transform, right? And so that's the work that, that is the addition. The job is wonderful and needed, but we also have to help that life get back on track and then stay there, right? Because it's expensive to have people fall back into homelessness. Not just financially, it's really hard on the individuals and the family members. It's tough on kids to be homeless.
The, the tiny house question, I didn't feel satisfied with your answer. I, I read a lot of other cities, you know, Sacramento, Seattle, San Jose, they're, they're doing shipping containers, or the tiny trailers, or they're trying different things, and your answer was, well, those are service-rich environments. So the impression I get, well, they're service-rich, and so that, that system is working there? Or it's?
The ones that I've heard very positive things about, there are case managers, counselors onsite. There are, there's a structure, a rule to the community. So it becomes a community, instead of just people put into housing and left for it to go as it would. That's how they've been successful, and it's, it's interesting to see that it's doing well.
So it is an opportunity when it's done right.
I believe it would be something worth exploring, absolutely, and I think there are some people in the community that are taking a look at it. There's going to be, being able to build those and then occupy them is a whole separate conversation, right? I don't, that's not what I do. But I know it's going to be a concern. But yes, people are doing.
That's something we can do.
Right, absolutely.
Ordinances and...
But it's something that is, it's a successful solution, that seems to be at a price point that doesn't hurt.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you, that's all I have for now.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentations. Excellent. And I, we're fortunate in our city, your, your agencies are held in very high regard. Excellent reputations. Your, your leaders, you, the leaders are, are very well thought of, your staff, so that's a, that's a good place to start right there, and it's been that way for some time. Now, how are we going to, obviously, we all care, and, and now we're even more aware of, of our situation. But how are we going to be kept updated, or where do we go from here? Who, several ideas were mentioned. Is it something that was going to be in a committee, or, or just to keep aware? And I know you, you love that, my, my question, Alan, understand. But seriously, I wonder where to go from here.
Councilmember Sullivan, that's really up to the city council. I can tell you that some of the things that are being asked and raised, staff has already investigated. We did a fairly detailed study on containers and whether a container program would be an applicable solution. As it turns out, because you have to make them habitable under certain codes, it costs about the same as building from the ground up with traditional construction techniques. So the things that have been raised that we have already done research on, we can certainly provide you answers on. And it's up to council whether you desire to send the issue to committee, or I think they talked about coming back for another visitation with some of the city services being presented. So we're awaiting your direction.
Okay, great. Fair enough. Can you give us a, just a, an idea, if, with someone being downtown, I understand that the biggest problem, actually, I have someone in our family that's just started working downtown, and they are really amazed at the number of homeless downtown now, and maybe, of course, with the weather being warmer, but surprised. And so with, with that being the case, are they, is there someone that invites them or encourages them to go to one of the shelters? And are they taken? Or are they, do they normally, do they know where the shelters are, and, and do they work their way over to the shelters if they're interested in, in that type of housing? How, how is that handled?
If there is somebody experiencing homelessness, and as a community in downtown, if we see that, you are able to call the Flood Office, so we can have an outreach worker respond and engage with that person. Also, I want to thank the Bakersfield Police Department, they work wonderfully with Flood, and they do, they have a yellow card that they will fill out, saying that they have encountered this person and they're homeless. We, of course, still, we do still have to verify the homelessness by going out and seeing ourselves that they are homeless, verifying. But of course, they can call our office if they do see someone and want somebody to respond. The office number, you know, is 661-23235663. And also, we do have, each of our outreach workers do have cell phones. I don't have those readily available in my head what their numbers are, but they do have, they do have cell phones, so they can call the office, and then I can also get you those direct numbers to the outreach worker.
Great, thank you. And just one, one question came up in my mind, talking about the families that are with, in, in your housing for some time. Are they taking the children, taking to school? How is that handled?
Oh, yeah. By law, they're required to be in school within 48 hours of coming into the shelter.
I see.
And the school districts are required, if the child desires to be bused to their school of origin. It's not necessarily the case that all children want to return to their school because of how children can treat one another and their own embarrassment, but that is an absolute requirement. We also have a licensed childcare at our facility for our children. And so there are, there are very good options for the kids with us specifically around their education.
And clothing, for instance. Of course, you do have.
Absolutely. We have an entire warehouse that we often have to start at zero with our families and make sure that they have what they need.
Well, you know, we certainly realize there's no simple solution, and certainly successful solution. But we do care, and I know personally, I'm open for suggestions, so I will support anything that, that, wish our, our general fund was more plush than it is. It certainly is not, as we, as we all know. But we'll certainly help just any way that we can. So let's keep this going and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Partley?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for a wonderful presentation, and Vice Mayor Smith for suggesting, suggesting this. I think Andre, you're involved with it too, and it's been very informative. Couple questions. I read recently where some downtown areas or strategic areas, they've repurposed, let's say, parking meters as a donation tool to be able to help fund homeless thing, homelessness, or a secure drop box. Could you elaborate on something like that, if it'd help, help us here in Bakersfield or not, to get some extra funds?
Some cities have done that with some success. I know I have heard that concept kicked around before in Bakersfield, but I have, I've never been the recipient of that. So I apologize, councilmember, but I don't know the, the success of those programs.
I would ask staff to, and I've sent this over to staff before, if they could kind of take an in-depth look at this potential tool to help fund, you know, some of our outreach efforts and help support folks like you too. I read in one article... I read in one article, and I think it was out of Denver, that it brought in like $120,000. So, you know, I don't know if we get that kind of money, but I think it could be, you know, some added dollars. Are you familiar with a program in the city of Santa Maria? It's a homeless business partnership.
What's the name of it?
Well, that's kind of what they call it. They call it the...
Homeless Business Partnership?
Yeah, exactly.
I am not.
Okay. One of the complaints that I have, and some other councilmembers probably have it too, is, you know, we all have sympathy for the homeless community, but the effects that it has on our local business community also. And it's a, an effort to connect with the business community, to help those businesses and get the people that may be interfering with their businesses to the proper resources too. So, I'd like staff to look into the possibility of adopting that program. Thank you. And the last item, and I just want to capitalize on what Councilmember Rivera had to say, in regard to CDBG funds, you know, I think this is a, really a time-critical component as our national leaders look at our budget. CDBG is kind of the last bullet in the gun for us, as far as funding certain things. And I really would like to see a resolution to get ahead of the curve, so to speak, to come back to the council. And I'd like the opinion of my colleagues to see if they would, you know, instead of wait, awaiting period, and having staff to just kind of get ahead of it and say, you know what, we're in support of CDBG funds, it's one of the critical things for our city, and have that come back as soon as possible to council. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think that's a great idea. I think the earlier we're on the record, the better off we are, so I'd absolutely support that action. I also wanted to refer an item to budget and finance specifically related to funding sources, to have an open and honest discussion about what creative ways we might look into to free up more dollars for the work you folks do. So, if we could get something like that plugged into an upcoming meeting, not the one next week, but another one after that, I think that's a conversation I would certainly appreciate, and I'm sure others would as well. I am off to LAFCO, but I will be back in a little bit.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address Councilmember Sullivan's questions on next steps. The idea from the beginning was to have the service providers talk to us today about, you know, what they are doing, and then the next step was to have staff come and make presentations, and how staff interacts with the problem, and to see from that if we can work towards solutions, how, you know, the city can interact better with the community and the providers, was the original idea. I would just like to address my personal anecdotal experience of downtown Bakersfield. I've worked downtown Bakersfield for 37 years, and there has always been a homeless, mentally ill population downtown. So, I'm, personally, I'm not convinced that it's worse. Maybe there's just more people downtown, and so we're getting more feedback, you know? I'm not sure about that. We're interested in, you know, how the police interact, and how the Parks Department interacts, and so that's why we want staff to come. And I would reinforce, Councilmember Rivera's gone, but the CDBG funds and perhaps, you know, it is a time to look at, we've spent that on infrastructure in the past, and that made sense, but because of the changes in society and the changes in legislation, AB 109 and other legislation, perhaps that money's better spent in different ways in the future. So, I think that might be worth looking at, and he's already referred it to budget and finance, so maybe that can be looked at there. Thank you again.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's been my honor to partner together with you, and I've seen the trust that Diane spoke about. That's what you're able to achieve, that's so difficult for people outside of this world to achieve with the clients who most need the help. And I would urge all of us to continue to invest in these community partners. What we see in terms of the rate of return, doing a lot with so little, that's the key to making a difference. You know, we have services down the road, but getting that point of outreach and engagement and trust, where you can bring that client in so that services can be provided, is critical. So, thank you so much for what you're doing, and to all of the rest of the partners. Stephen, thank you, what a wonderful partner you are. But, thank you again, we look forward to finding solutions together as we move forward.
Move to adjourn.
The council's going to take a dinner break now and return for the 5:15 agenda. We are adjourned.